Mr. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Liskow?
Here.
Mr. Malongo?
Here.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Falcimano? Mr. Zanovich, Mr. Ross, and Mr. Huser are asked.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the August 26, 2021 Board of Adjustments meeting. Please go to the board and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands for our nation under God, indivisible, and created in just as small as all.
All right. I have a motion to waive, read, and approve the minutes for the July 27, 2021 special meeting.
I'll make that motion.
And if everyone could just remember to push the button and turn the mic on while we begin. Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Liskow?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
All right. Next up is a motion to waive, read, and approve the minutes for the July 27, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Liskow?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Actually, I don't know if I can second it because this is the one I wasn't at.
No, you can just abstain.
So abstain.
Mr. Evans, please allow me to second it. Mr. Gray?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you. Next up is the resolution approving the appeal application of Daniel DeFranco at 1905 Surph Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. And on this one, I'll have to read it three and a half pages. That's okay. We'll just read it. I think I captured everything I'm supposed to. What we're going to say, the applicant, Mr. DeFranco, previously submitted an development application to the Borough of Delmar and the said development permit involved property at 1905 Surph Avenue. And the said document essentially sought permission to retroactively legitimize the existence of a second driveway at the site, and the zoning officer denied that said request. And thereafter, the applicant appealed the decision to the Delmar zoning board of adjustment in the hope of having that zoning board, the zoning officer decision reversed. And the applicant submitted application for these master of these, and public hearing occurred on or about April 23, 2020, and May 28, 2020. And at that point, Nancy Oliver formally objected to the application through her attorney, Keith Oliver, and the applicant was represented by both David Crankell and Lisa Crankell. And after debate and discussion by a split vote, the board voted to affirm the decision of the municipal zoning officer, and a resolution was thereafter adopted. And the applicants thereafter appealed that decision through a private writ complaint in Superior Court. And settlement discussions, I'm sorry, whereas the matter was appealed to the Superior Court, and the zoning board filed an answer to the complaint. And upon further review and discussion and negotiation, the parties conceptually agreed to a potential settlement. And whereas such a settlement term was, the settlement discussion for fruitful and productive. And whereas per injuried case law, any time there's a settlement of a case involving a land use advocate, a land use board, the settlement has to be effectuated and legitimized and approved in a public setting with opportunity for public comment. And pursuant to settlement discussions, the reporting would settlement hearing occurred on July 27. And we mark into the record all the same things as we marked in the prior records plus pictures. And the testimony was presented by Daniel DeFranco and Samantha Lewis, his fiance, and Lisa Crankell, plus the attorney. Ted Donkey was also sworn. And we're basically saying all those findings of fact that we did at the beginning in terms of the structure of having set up on the site. And the ultimate decision was, and there were no members of the public who expressed any comments, questions, or objections, now therefore be a resolve. For the reasons set forth herein and set forth during the public hearing, the board has unanimously decided to reverse the subject decision of the municipal zoning officer relative to that second driveway at the site. And thus, the board finds that there was sufficient evidence presented to prove that a second driveway existed at the site prior to 1992. And we're basically saying that upon further review, the board unanimously adopted many reasons for reversing the decision, including all the reasons that were set forth in a portion of the initial resolution, and also confirmation that the applicant submitted a survey from 1989, which clearly showed that second driveway, recognition that the zoning officer did not have access to and/or the ability to review that survey when his zoning officer decision was issued, and recognition that per Ted, had that survey been available to him, he would have approved, administratively approved, that request, and recognition that the resolution will end the litigation, and the cost and stress and angst associated therewith, and also recognition that in many respects, a negotiated settlement is always better to a case, to end the case rather than a court-imposed decision, and recognition that in a negotiated settlement, you typically have both parties getting their main concerns addressed. And basically, the reversal would be subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the applicant shall cause the plans to be revised so as to portray a shared driveway again on the separate portion of the site. And that was to, more safely, facilitate the ability of both the applicant and the affected neighbor to move in and out of the site. And also-
Mr. Kennedy, correction. It's just a single apron. It's not a shared driveway.
I'm sorry. I meant shared apron. That's right. Were you using charity?
Well, it's a single apron.
Single apron?
That's going to be divided by the properties.
Got it.
But it's definitely not a shared driveway.
Okay. I didn't mean, so it's shared apron. Thank you. And then it's also going to be the applicant shall, now I put within 120 days of when the adoption, but the resolution gets adopted, and in good faith, going to arrange for the existing, replace the existing stone driveway with some type of, same type of style, color, and pavers which currently exist on the Oliver portion of the driveway. And they're also going to, they're going to revise and review the plan so that there shall be a paver demarcation line flush with the apron, dividing the shared apron so that they all know who owns which. And I just put in there, note, we sort of said this at the hearing, that we all as board representatives highly respectfully encourage the applicant and the affected neighbor to memorialize a written agreement and record something and deal with cost and liability and maintenance, all those things. We don't really get involved in that, and we're not retaining jurisdiction over that other than we said we suggested they do it. And also, the applicant shall revise the plan so as to portray what they were going to do. And also, I think there was a request that they show the current lot covered as what they have. And then we also said it would be a good faith coordination of efforts between the applicant and the neighbor because they're going to have to work together. And also, we said that the applicant and agents, representatives, successor owners shall not, or either party shall not block or otherwise park in or block that portion of the shared apron, which would prevent the other party from using it. And the, I think this was one of the big elements, was that driveway has to be maintained in accordance with prevailing borough standards. And the other two big things, upon adoption of the resolution and successful expiration of the appeal period, the applicant has to dismiss the case with prejudice against the zoning board and/or the borough, any other agents without costs, and sign mutual releases, releasing each other from liability, which was the standard. So I'm sorry I had to read that into the record, but I think subject to Mr. Fitzgerald's concern, I can do that. If you want, we can adopt it subject to Ted's review, and I'll get the applicant's attorney to review it as well.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the resolution as read into the record by Mr. Kennedy for the appeal application of Daniel DeFranco at 1905 Surph Avenue?
I'll make that motion.
That was Mr. Malongo and seconded by Alson.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Abstain.
Mr. Liskow?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Abstain.
All right. Next up is the resolution approving the applications for Joseph and Kimberly Meili at 307 15th Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, that resolution was dealing with the request to install an outdoor shower at the site. And the conditions of note included, the inclusion of an up confirming that the shower door shall open to the applicant's rear yard area and not the adjacent neighbor, confirmation that the shower door shall not swing on or over any adjacent property, as we obviously have no authority to grant permission for anyone to do that, and rather, the shower door shall only swing on and over the applicant's property. The outdoor shower shall have a roof over the same. The outdoor shower, I think we said it was going to tie into the municipal sewer system, correct? Was that? Okay. I'll have Ted confirm that. And comply with prevailing building and fire code regulations. I think that was the gist of that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. Chairman, on that application, did the rear door even move before it takes toward the back of that application?
I think Mr. Kennedy covered that.
Yeah, we did. And so it swings to the rear as opposed to the neighbor. Good recall.
Sorry.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Um, oh, Mr. Capoli. All right. So can I have a motion to approve the resolution as summarized by Mr. Kennedy? Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Thank you, Mr. Capoli.
Hi, Mr. Hutchinson?
Abstain.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Liskow?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
All right. Next up is the resolution approving the application of Andrew and Maureen Sin at 409 15th Avenue.
That was approval for both variances associated with an application to construct a two-car garage on the lot. And it just, you know, two of the more relevant findings where there was a debate and discussion saying, yeah, the applicant should have brought this up back, you know, a couple of years ago when they knew they were doing this or got approval for the house. And there was concern that, you know, we shouldn't have developed a piecemeal process. And we say in response, the applicant advised that they were not necessarily aware of the need for the garage several years ago, and had the garage previously constructed, the pool installation process would be unnecessarily complicated. I think, Mr. Gray, you were, you said, you know, we don't find any bad fate, and so we reflect that. And then we also have a large discussion about the side yard setback variance, which was required, and how we're concerned about that three-foot grab, three-foot side yard setback. And ultimately, we said that there was not sufficient testimony or evidence presented to justify that. And as a result, they eliminated that. They agreed to reduce the width of the garage. And so basically, the conditions of note with this application were confirmation that the garage would be 15 feet wide by 18 feet long, remember it was initially 17 feet long, confirmation that the garage will have a compliant side yard setback of five feet, i.e. the initially requested side yards that by variance has been eliminated and withdrawn, confirmation that the dryer and bathroom vent shall be relocated above the new roof line, confirmation that the air conditioning condenser shall be located in its own compliant location. I said presumably hanging from the rear garage wall according to prevailing building and construction code regulations. I think that's what we had said. Confirmation that the existing driveway width is 18 feet for the prior board approval, confirmation that the upstairs portion of the garage shall remain unfinished with no utility service but for electricity, and inclusion of a note that the garage shall not be utilized as living space, and the inclusion of another confirming that there shall be no interior connection slash access between the existing home and the proposed garage.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All right. Can I have a motion to waive, read, and approve the resolution as summarized by Mr. Kennedy for Andrew and Maureen Sin at 409 15th Avenue?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Liskow?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
All right. Next up is the resolution for the application of Christopher Binick at 902 D Street.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. This was approval for both variances for construction and improvements to an existing single-family home and the rebuilding of a detached garage on the site. I had a couple of pipelines, and Architect Mary Hearn was good enough to fill in the missing information. And the conditions of note included that the garage is not to be too as living space ingrated grading and drainage details need to be presented to the borough engineer for his review and approval. They need to provide fire-rated walls per prevailing building and construction code requirements. The new replacement garage is going to be the same as the existing garage, remember it's going to be within the same footprint and on top of the existing foundation. The applicant revised the plan so as to portraying confirm that the existing stormwater drain on the north side of the property shall be removed or buried, and confirm that there should be no utility service in the garage except utility. They had to confirm the location of the air conditioning condenser. And I think that was it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. All right. Can I have a motion to waive, read, and approve the resolution for Christopher Binick at 902 D Street?
Do you have a motion?
I'm going to give it to Mr. Capoli. And Mr. Gray, second.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Abstain.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Liskow?
Yes.
Mr. Malongo?
Yes.
Mr. Capoli?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
All right. We are up to our first and only application of the night. It's Edelman Investment Group, LLC, at 1112 14th Avenue, 12th Avenue, and 108-108, May 12th Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, there's one resolution that we're going to carry, the glossy denial, and we can just carry that to the next meeting.
Oh, sure.
It's a work in progress. Sorry about that.
All right. I'll make that motion. Somebody make a second. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on the continued application tonight for Edelman Investment Group, can I just, with your permission, can I do a couple of procedural things?
Yeah, please do. If I could, just jump right in front of you real quick.
Sure.
We'll do the same thing that we did last time. We're here as application to somewhere between 10:00 and 10:30 tonight, assuming it lasts that long. We'll look for a natural break point, and we'll ask the applicant to keep your eye on the time for that presentation. Somewhere in the middle, we'll go for at least one break during the meeting. If we need a second, we'll go that way. With that, Mr. Kennedy, it's yours.
Okay, so a couple of things. We're going to swear in Jerry Frieda, the borough engineer, and Christine Bell, borough planner. If you all would mind raising your right hands, I swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extension providing will be the truth, the best you know, to help you guide it. Okay, let the record reflect. Both have been sworn. And we have here, we're going to start as B2, enter into the record as B2. It's a certification from board member Holly Deeks that she listened to the recording and/or reviewed the transcripts of the July 27, 2021 hearing. And so that's a certification. We'll mark it in the record as B2. And as is always the case, big shout out for doing that because it's not always the most fun thing to do. It's not always the easiest thing to do, but it's a very important thing to do, particularly on some of the bigger applications that have a tendency to carry over. So we might not know, you know, might not be people here. So it's important. So thank you for doing that. And it also makes you realize and recognize how important it is for one person to speak at a time, and people speaking to the microphone, because gargle transmissions are not really fun. And on that, I think my notes where we left it off, I think we were getting ready to cross the fam and Mary Hearn, but I defer to our friends here. Is that where we were coming to?
I know there was a discussion whether or not you wanted the whole cross off still in higher cases, or if you wanted to do it individually. So I do wish to respect.
I think, I think we were moving forward with allowing the attorney to do his cross as the applicant's best time.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Brodsky.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address for the record an issue that, I apologize for raising late, but I had sent over some information earlier this afternoon. I sent it over to council. I hadn't had the opportunity to speak with council yet with regard to the deficiencies in the notice for the hearing. We had-
At the last hearing, you asked whether or not there was any exceptions to the notice. Council said there were none. You proceeded forward. I think we should just move on with this hearing.
I understand. Mr. Brodsky, we'll hear what Mr. Brodsky has to say.
Yeah, no, I did. And at the time, I wasn't aware of the issue. And there are a couple of issues with the notice, and I did send it over. It was emailed, and I called your office this afternoon. I'll get you, I'll get you a copy. I do apologize for the late notice, but it did come to that earlier today. So as the board is aware, notice is jurisdictional. Notice is jurisdictional. That's very clear. Without proper notice, without sufficient notice, the board doesn't have jurisdiction to hear the matter, and any actions that the board might take would be a nullity if notice is deficient. So one of the items that stands out in the notice is with respect to the proposed height of the application. Okay? The, and that's, there's a twofold component with respect to the concerns on the sufficiency of the notice. One is, as you know, your ordinance will set back. Your ordinance has two restrictions with respect to height, one in the R75 zone. One is with respect to the number of stories, and the other is with respect to the actual height per se. So what's been noticed for this application is a proposed height of 42.5 feet. And it's been noticed as a four-story building, right? Parking deck on the ground level, three stories of residential, and then a rooftop deck, which has occurrences on the roof, which are the lobby up there, there are bathrooms, there are elevator shafts, stairwells, et cetera, stair towers. And so your ordinance defines how you, how you measure height. And in the R75 zone, we've reviewed it and, you know, spent a lot of time on it, and we have two concerns. One is, we think the building that we're looking at consists of five stories. Okay? You've got the parking level, you've got the three levels of the 24 condominium units. And then on the top, like I said, you've got, you've got habitable, occupiable space, for lack of a better word. You've got bathrooms. Your ordinance defines stories, right? Stories in a building as the space between the floor and the ceiling. So we've got floor and ceilings in the bathrooms, we've got floor and ceilings in the lobby, or whatever it's called, right outside the elevator that goes up to the roof deck. And we've got these other structures. Those structures, right, the highest one that's on there, the elevator component is 14.7 feet. And so we don't see any exception in your ordinance to including that in the height, in the height measurement. And so we find the notice is misleading to notice that it's at 42.5 feet when in actually, the highest point is at 57.2. That's for the elevator component. With regard to the stair towers, we've got, they go up 11.2 feet to a height of 53.7 feet. Now, we're already in the realm of a D variance, right? Because the proposed height not only exceeds that which is permitted, the proposed height of the roof itself, the 42.5 feet, but it actually exceeds the permitted height in the zone by more than 10%. And under the municipal land use law, when you, when your proposed height exceeds that which is permitted, and exceeds it by an excess of 10% over that which is permitted, it's not just the bulk variance, it's not a C variance. It becomes a D variance, as we call it, a used variance with the height and standard of the roof. But over and above that, we think it's misleading to notice a height of 42.5 feet when in actuality, it's going up to 57.2 feet. And to notice four stories when in fact, there are five stories that are proposed as part of this, as part of this application. And that is all defined in 47.12 of your ordinance. There are other concerns we have with the ordinance, now that we've reviewed the plan, heard some testimony, and have digested all of it. The FAR. Now, the FAR, floor area ratio, what's permitted in the zone is 40%. What has been noticed is a proposed FAR of 173%. And that doesn't include the parking level. Planner and I have reviewed it, researched it. We don't see any basis to exclude the parking level in that FAR, in the FAR calculation. If you add the garage to the FAR, right, it takes it from 173%, so a little over four times what's permitted, to, I don't know, 250% or so, thereabouts, which is over, you know, five or six times what's permitted in the zone. So again, significant component of the application, as I think was not set forth in the notice. And there are other issues. There's a, we think that there's a front yard setback variance that's required that hasn't been noticed with respect to the porch, which is a multi-level porch. And we don't see anything in the notice about proposed open space, which is required in the zone. The roof deck, the amenity deck, doesn't satisfy that. So we think that's another variance that hasn't been, hasn't been noticed. You need 6,300 square feet of open space based on what's proposed here. So for all those reasons, I wanted to, because it's a jurisdictional defect, and would deprive the board of jurisdiction, I wanted to raise it. I do apologize for not raising it at the beginning of the first hearing, but I've caught up, and I've gone through it and analyzed it, and we went through the plans in detail. There's a lot going on. This is an aggressive application, as we all know. And so it took some time to analyze all that. So I think it's a jurisdictional defect. I think the board doesn't have jurisdiction therefor. And I would think, I would suggest that the applicant renotice so that we don't go through a whole hearing, only have to have, only have to have to do it again.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Mr. Kennedy, where does this leave us?
What I would respectfully suggest is that we let Mr. Brodsky make some comments on that, and then I'll have some comments after we hear what he says.
Thank you.
If that's acceptable to the board.
Yeah, I think so. Mr. Brodsky, if you could just keep it to the notice issues, maybe not abstain of technical data or anything you may agree or disagree with.
Absolutely. So we're going to read from the notice, the actual notice with respect to the first issue that was raised regarding stories. And this is what the notice says. It says, "The first story will consist of the entry, the foyer, and the elevator on the parking areas. The first floor will also have 47 EV-wired electric vehicle parking stalls. Above the parking story, there shall be three stories of livable units serviced by an elevator and two emergency stairwells. The applicant intends to construct an amenity deck on the roof serviced by the elevator and stairwells. The deck will offer outdoor space for the unit owners." I think it's very clear to the reasonable, whatever reasonable person as to what this application consists of. And that's all that's required with respect to the notice. Turning to the issue of the floor area ratio that was raised, again, the notice, I'm reading from the notice. It says, "Required 40% existing, 160% proposed, 173% without the garage." So it specifically identifies that the garage was excluded from the calculation in the notice. So there's nothing that's misleading in this notice. In fact, there was effort given to provide notice as to what was being proposed, what was included in the calculations, and what wasn't included in the calculations. You know, and I would also point out for the record that while council was referring to certain things regarding the zone, right, the R75 zone, that this particular parcel actually qualifies for and is part of the MF75 zone, which is a multifamily zone that was adopted approximately 15 years ago by this township, or township of Delmar, that specifically indicates that there is no floor area ratio in the MF75 zone. So while there are some portions of the MF75 zone that we not exactly comply with, there are certainly standards that this board can consider when determining what specifically is allowed or what was anticipated to be allowed in this particular question. So having said all that, I think that the notice was clearly sufficient. It clearly gave the community notice of what was proposed. And I don't see anything wrong with the notice. And again, I would also point out that council specifically waived any objections at this here.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kennedy.
Sure. And if I could just ask, do the engineer or planner have anything to add? And I know I see, I know that you do, but I'd like to, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, a couple things. This is a tough and difficult situation. This is a tough and difficult situation, because we do not like procedural claims, we do not, courts do not like procedural claims, and we try very, very, very hard to avoid the existence of procedural claims. So, you'll recall, the first public hearing was July 27th, 2021, and at the outset of the meeting, as is our normal protocol, I inquired as to whether anyone had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of, of the notice. And I do recall that there were no objections, and I think Rick Brodsky was good enough to say, hey, no objections, and, or something to that effect. And I think based upon that, I said, the Board Secretary and I reviewed the notice and found everything to be in order, so it'd be, I usually say, humble opinion, that we have jurisdiction to proceed. And that first public hearing, then, based upon that, because notice is jurisdictional, we, we continued, and we had, I don't know, three, four, or five hours of testimony, ultimately carried to tonight. So, today, rightly immediately prior to the hearing, as Mr. Brodsky indicated, the objecting attorney indicated that he, based upon information that he's just reviewed and, and consultation with the objecting planner, he does have questions regarding the sufficiency and accuracy and completeness of the notice. So, number one, we asked the question at the beginning of the meeting to, to address those issues and to avoid issues like this later on down the road. There's a very complex process that we go through, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience who are here, who don't come to, typically come to the zoning board, this process we go through when people are putting up a new home, or a new deck, or a new addition, is just a very thorough board. But obviously, the point of this is that it's a complex and procedurally oriented process, and because of the many lawyers in the room, we're always concerned about the, you know, potential likelihood of litigation. So, we try to go out of our way to avoid a problem. And likewise, or obviously, we don't want to hear four hours of testimony and then deal with the notice issue. So, at the first public hearing, I'm saying it was about four hours of testimony, but that's just from memory, but we had some live witness testimony, we had cross-examination by the attorneys, and we had some Board questions we still not, not completely finished yet. But, the point is, we generally don't do all that if there was notice issue or, or concern. And now, we're here, and obviously, both sides, both skilled attorneys, they've been, and their witnesses have been, have been prepping for this, because you just don't wake up and come to this hearing, you, you have to prepare your case. And also, now, we also have to be mindful of the public, because the public time is, is at issue as well. And Mr. Brodsky rightly said, hey, sorry, we're bringing this up late, it's not any intentional issue, it's just we sort of figured this out now. So, and what Mr. Brodsky said, and he's correct, notice is jurisdictional. So, the notice has to be right and correct, or the Board does not even have jurisdiction to act. So, now, we're in a tough, tough situation. It's awkward, it's unpleasant, it's interfering with the flow of the hearing, and, but it's important. As indicated, there, there's lawyers in the room, and there's lots of interested members of the public in the room, there's a, clearly a potential likelihood of litigation, and we obviously always like to proceed thoroughly, cautiously, and professionally, because at the end of the day, whether this application is approved, or whether it's approved with conditions, or whether it's denied, at the end of the day, our Board decision, the decision that you all make, the procedure that you all employ and, and allow that unfolds, and your thought process that's on the record, and, and the resolution that will be adopted will be subject to the blistering review of the offended party, whoever's not happy when they leave the room, are going to be critical of all of those things. Likewise, right? If there is ever a court, the court is involved, the court is going to critically review those things. So, if there is ever litigation, and a court looks like this, the court's gonna want to make sure that what we did was not arbitrary, not capricious, and not unreasonable. So, hence my frustration. So, now, just for the record, what I would say to Mr. Brodsky, attorney for, for the applicant, is just, for the record, let me ask a question. And I'm not saying that Rick Brodsky is right in, with his objections, I'm not saying he's wrong, but just hearing what you have heard, and hearing, excuse me, his questions and comments, concerns, is there any school of thought which says to you, we don't think he's right, but out of a bonus of caution, you're gonna renotice just to close that potential loophole and avoid any potential procedural issue? Is that something that you want to consider, or no?
We don't, we want to move forward with this.
I'm sorry?
We would like to move forward with this.
Okay. So, that puts us in a, in a tough position, and then, so what we have to say then is, just for the record, I have reviewed the notice again, and Mr. Brodsky read some of it, but let me just start. It says, "Please take notice that the undersigned has filed an appeal or application for development with the zoning board of adjustment of the Borough of Belmar for variances from the requirements of the land use ordinance so as to permit the applicant, Edelman Investment Group, LLC, contract purchaser of the Belmar Inn, 102-114 12th Avenue, and 108 12th Avenue, Reed Devco, LLC, owners of 108 and 108 and a half 12th Avenue, to raise the Belmar Inn and all other structures located on 108 and 108 and a half 12th Avenue, and form one lot. Applicant proposes to construct 24 condominiums thereon. The first story will consist of entry, foyer, and elevator. The first floor will also have 47 EV-wired electric vehicle parking stalls. Above the parking story shall be three stories of livable units serviced by an elevator and two emergency stairwells. The applicant intends to construct an amenity deck on the roof serviced by the elevator and stairwells. The deck will offer outdoor space for unit holders." And then they go on to list use variance, side yard setback, side yard combined, and again with the numbers, rear yard setback height, maximum building coverage, lot impervious coverage, floor area ratio, parking, width of curved cut, flat roof, and then it also says, "And any other variances that the Board or Code Enforcement Officer may deem necessary under the code." So, I think that based upon the, just general, this, the law requires that the notice provide the day, the date, and the time of the hearing, the block and lot designations and street address, and the nature of the matter to be considered, and the information as to when and where the plans were on file and can be reviewed by the public. I also think, well, I also want to, I mean, note that I'm very happy that Rick Brodsky and his client were here for the first part of the hearing. They did get an opportunity to participate and cross-examine, and will continue to, to do that. And I'm also, just need to point out what we just said, I asked Mr. Brodsky, is there any reason, out of, out of a bonus of caution, you just want to reserve your rights and come back and notice? Because after all, when all is said and done, if there ever is a reversal or an issue with this, it really is on the applicant. The applicant will have to bear, I mean, to bear the brunt of that. So, against that backdrop, the applicant said, no, and we're sort of in a tough position because we have deemed the application complete, we have started the public hearing, and if we did not get consent to extend, there could, under certain circumstances, be a potential automatic approval of, of the application. And obviously, an automatic approval is completely diametrically opposed to everything that we're all about. We want controlled development, approved with conditions, and that, so the concept of an automatic approval. So, I do think we're in a tough position, and I do think that if we did not hear this tonight, we could be in an issue, and then the applicant did not consent, we would be in an issue for a potential claim, for a potential claim for an automatic approval. So, based upon all this, I don't think we have an option but, but to proceed. We note Mr. Brodsky's objections for the record, and I think, Mr. Chairman, unless the Board feels differently, we, we have to move on.
Thanks, Mr. Kennedy. Any objections on the Board proceeding tonight?
Not objection, but a question. In the prior meeting in July, I recall there was a conversation that had been had during that meeting regarding the height of the elevator shaft, and it was deemed as not to be an issue. I don't know if anyone on the Board, or any of the people I recall who actually made the comment, but, but that was on the record in the prior meeting.
So, it, it was not deemed to not be an issue. I think the applicant is going to provide us with more information. The way the ordinance is written, if the HVAC, the elevator shaft, all of those type of things take up less than 10% of the floor area of the roof, they don't count to the overall height, so we just ask for confirmation.
That's the statement. That statement right there was the one I was looking for, because that was made in the last meeting. Do they exceed 10%? The, 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 the amateurs?
On the record, they do not.
So, they don't exceed 10%?
And just for the record, that's Mary Hearn, our.
And Christine, you just confirmed that, that, that that's the case. So, it does not appear to be an issue, Mr. Chairman, to me at this point.
Thank you. Before we get into any technical merits of this discussion, we're just talking about the notice and whether we're gonna proceed. We'll let the applicants hash it out on any of the technical information on the procedures. So, I was asking the Board if there are any questions on whether or not they would object to proceeding with the application tonight, noting Mr. Brodsky's objection and Mr. Brodsky's desire to move forward. All right, I see none. With that, I will say that we will move forward with the application tonight.
Okay. And so, now, refresh me, Dave, are we starting with you, or are we starting with?
Cross, I think cross.
Okay. So, Rick, are you gonna cross-examine Mary Hearn for 45 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and Mary, why don't you move up so we can be near her microphone?
Do we want anything on the easels?
And April, will that microphone pick up Mary?
Somebody move closer.
Okay.
Do you want me up here?
Okay.
Okay.
I think rendering, at least.
Why not?
And I may mean certain things, and I'll find them. Sound good?
Sounds good. This is yours. David, we have a couple of very interesting things you may want to mark at some point.
On the applicant side? Are you ready? Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Brodsky, you have that?
Mr. Kennedy, we need to swear in this, or anything like that, she's already on.
Mary, you were previously sworn at the last meeting, at the last hearing, correct?
Yes.
And you recognize we still under oath?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Board. Good evening, Ms. Hearn, nice to see you again. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions with regard to your testimony from the, from the first hearing. You, you went through all of the variances that were associated with the application, just identifying them. I know you have a planner testify with regards to the substantiation. I'm not gonna ask you any question without the justification with any variances specifically, but I'm gonna ask you just some more general questions, I think. First, I know that there are, and you testified, that there are three D-variances associated with the application, right? For the, for the use, first of all, correct?
For the use, yes.
Okay. And that's, and, and that is because in this zone, single-family is what is permitted use.
I'm objecting because I'm not sure if you're saying that as fact, or you're asking whether or not that's the only use.
What are the permitted uses in the R75 zone?
Single-family, residential.
Okay. And what's being proposed here are 24 condominium units, which would be multifamily, correct?
Correct.
So, that's, that's the basis for requiring the, the use variance, the D1 variance, right?
That's correct.
Okay. In addition to those D-variances, there are a number of bulk variances that you went through associated with the application, right? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And there were also two other D-variances, right? Other than the D1 for the use, per se, we have a D-variance for the proposed height, correct?
Correct.
And the reason we need a D-variance for the height is because the proposed height exceeds that which is permitted in the zone, and exceeds that permitted amount by 10, by more than 10%.
That's correct.
Okay. And the third vary, the third D-variance is for floor area ratio. Now, floor area ratio, I understand, I guess 40% is permitted in the zone?
I don't have that chart in front of me, I can find out.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that, if you worry.
50% is allowed in the zone.
50% is allowed in the zone, okay. The notice has 40, but 50% is permitted in the zone, and what's being proposed as part of this application is an FAR of 173%.
That's correct.
And that excludes the garage.
That's correct.
Do you know why that calculation was made without including the garage?
I, I do not.
Okay.
Because I didn't generate the chart.
Understood, understood. I was just checking.
Fair enough.
Now, with regard to the stories, right? I understand that two and a half stories are what is permitted in this zone.
In the R75 zone.
In the R75 zone, which is the zone we're in.
That's correct.
Okay. And the application, or the notice talks about four stories being proposed, if I'm correct. Is that right? It doesn't specifically say four, it says three, consisting of the condominium units, eight on each floor, and the ground-level parking, and the amenities. If it's not you, I know who to ask. Okay. Just wanted to go through it.
Fair enough.
Now, with regard to the number of units that were proposed, 24, where one is permitted in the zone, did you, where did that 24-unit number come from?
From the development team.
Okay. Did you, when you designed the application, and again, the, the architecture is very nice, we just disagree as to whether it, it fits here, was there any give and take with respect to the extent to which 24 units exceeded that which was permitted in the zone?
There was in the first application, and now with this application, it's always been 24, and no repeat.
Okay. So, the, the developer came to you and said, "I want 24 units here," and you, and you designed it pursuant to your direction?
That's correct.
Okay. Was an analysis of the zoning performed by you in coming to that number?
No.
Okay. Did you check the zoning ordinance, not only with respect to the density, but all of the variances we talked about before designing the project, or did you just move to design based on what the developer had, had told you to do?
The process was a two-part design. The planner had a lot to do with the footprint, and I was given the footprint to work with him.
Okay.
The planner is also the site engineer, or designer of the site.
So, I should ask that question to him? Okay. All right, let's, let's talk about the roof deck for a moment. So, yeah, we can put that up, sure.
Anybody know what number that is? Here it is. So, it's A25. So it's A25. There you go.
Great. So up on the roof deck, we talked about it a little earlier. I'm looking at it and I see, and you testified last time, that there are a number of amenities located on the roof deck. And just to start out, the roof deck without the amenities, the height of the roof deck exceeds the height permitted in the zone, correct?
Correct.
And it exceeds it by more than 10%, so we need the D variance.
That's correct.
Now, when the height was calculated, did it take into account the amenities that exist on the roof, including the enclosed bathrooms, the, I forgot what it's called on the plan, but the lobby or the whatever it is outside of the elevator?
It's an elevator vestibule.
Yes.
And they're not bathrooms, they're toilet rooms. There's no bathing facilities.
Okay. And are toilet rooms excluded from the borough's ordinance definition of a story?
I'm not aware.
Okay. And do you know what the height is of the toilet rooms and the elevator lobby?
I do. It's on our drawings. The toilet rooms are 52 foot at the same elevation as the stairs, and the elevator is at 57 foot 2 inches.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, 57?
Foot 2 inches.
Thank you.
These are all measured above the average grade plane.
Understood. And that goes for, in addition to the toilet rooms and the elevator, which is right in the center for that elevator vestibule? And what's the purpose of the functionality of the vestibule?
So that when you come out of the elevator, you're not in the rain.
Got it. And how large is that room square footage-wise, approximately?
I'll give it to you. It's 24 feet by 7 and 1/2 feet.
I'm not going to try and do that math, but, so...
It's less than 100 square feet.
Less than 100 square feet, and height at about 52, 52 feet.
Off of grade.
Off of grade, right. Is it?
172.
Oh, 200. Sorry. My thought was 4 times 25 is 100.
Yes. You may note it. So, in your experience, is it unusual to, for an application to propose amenities on a roof that is already in excess of the height permitted in the zone?
It's actually been done in town four times by me, on the Ocean Block. So we followed suit there. When we have homes, and they're not allowed now, but we have some homes that have flat roofs, where people have wanted handicapped accessible access to their own roof decks, and this has been done before.
62 feet?
Well, my question is, I'm talking about in the context of a D variance situation where the height exceeds
They all were.
Of the D variance for a use that's not permitted in the zone?
No.
Okay. So you testified last time also with respect to the solar panels, which is a great environmental thing, I understand. And I think you testified that one of the benefits of installing the solar panels on that north end of the roof would be to, I don't remember your exact words, what word it was, to keep people away from that end of the roof deck.
Right. That was intentional.
That was intentional because of the proximity to the residences immediately adjacent.
That's correct.
Right. Obviously, if there were no roof deck, that wouldn't be a concern.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, we talked about the height as well earlier, and I guess my question is, obviously, could a development be proposed for this site which was not a four or five-story building?
Yes.
Could it be lower?
Yes.
Would it be able to be developed for permitted use in the zone?
Yes.
Okay. If there were to be a reduction in the number of units, would the application, or the development, I should say, require less variances and/or less intense variances?
Yes.
And with regard to parking, it just sticks out to me because you're proposing, or the developers proposing, 47 spaces, is it? 47 spaces are proposed where 48 are required. With all of the other variances that far exceed all of the requirements in the zone, is there a reason that another space wasn't added? To remove the necessity, I mean, if you get to 47, why couldn't you go to 48?
It didn't come under my power.
Got it. Okay. And obviously, if less units were proposed, we wouldn't have the parking issue in terms of necessitating a variance, correct?
No. You would need parking for something else.
We would need parking, but we would be, I think the application would be able to comply with parking if the number of units was reduced.
Possibly.
Yeah. And was there any consideration that you know of, given by the applicant, to reducing the size of the development in order to comply or comply meta with all of these variances? If you know.
If it was, it wasn't discussed with me.
Okay. So some of the, so we talked about the three D variances and the intensity here. Did you do any calculation with regard to the density per acre that is proposed for the application?
No. That would be an engineer's job.
Got it. Let me ask you this. With respect to a number, some of the bulk variances that are associated with the application, so we've got side setback, we've got building coverage, lot coverage, parking, curb cut with roof, rear setback, I just want to ask you about a couple of those. Does it concern you that with respect to the bulk variances for building coverage, lot coverage, well, for those, does it concern you that since the proposed building coverage is 71.11%, where 20% is permitted, and 80%, with respect to lot coverage, 80% is proposed where 55 is permitted, does that typically indicate that there's an overbuild for the given lot?
Again, it's not my jurisdiction. I'm the architect of the project.
Got it. Okay. All right, let me ask you a little bit just about the decks or the balconies. We're getting to some architecture. So with the balconies, I noticed, I guess, there was testimony that all of the 24 units have balconies.
That's correct.
So the balconies that are in the rear, let's say, or to the north, which is where my clients, the Matthews, their property is, what are those people sitting on those balconies looking at?
Hopefully, the ocean.
Well, yes. Now, the ones that are on the first or second floor, can they make it out?
Yeah.
Okay. Would they be also looking into the adjacent residential properties that back up to it?
Do they have view of those properties? Yes.
Okay.
Will they be looking there? I'm not going to testify.
All right. And so, but I guess my point is, all of those balconies are directly facing my client's property, in particular, and the other properties that back up, back-to-back to this lot, correct?
There are four balconies on each level that can see due north.
Okay. And my client's property is due north, is immediately adjacent. And how far away from the property line are those balconies?
Nine feet. I'm sorry, 10 feet.
Okay. So these...
Excuse me, Mr. Borowski, if I could just ask the public to keep quiet so that we could hear the application goes through, trying to be respectful for everybody. Everybody in the public is going to get a chance to ask Ms. Hearn questions, every expert and the applicants. So please hold your comments till the end. We can go through this lots smoother. Thank you.
And I'd like to circle back. The two at the corners are 10 feet off the rear property line, the two more interior balconies are 16 feet off the property line.
Okay. And the required rear setback there is what?
40 feet.
40. And what is being proposed, you're telling me, is?
10 and 16 to the balconies.
10 and 16. All right, so there's a 40-foot rear setback required. We've got balconies at 10 and 16 proposed. Does it concern you that in a residential zone, that those balconies are that proximate to surrounding residential homes?
No.
Why not?
Because I think they're much better amenity than what's there now.
But do they comply with the zoning ordinance?
They don't comply with the R-75 zone.
And that's the zone we're in?
That's the zone we're in.
Okay. And is there a reason, is there a reason that rear setback could not be complied with, the 40 feet?
Yes. The depth of the proposed building.
Okay, which is driven by the number of units.
That's correct.
Okay. So again, reduction in the number of units would result in being able to push the rear of the building further away from that rear property line, obviously, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, let me ask you just a couple more questions. The rear setback that's required in the zone, 40 feet, is written for a residential zone, correct, the R-75? And so the ordinance contemplates that properties would hold their 40-foot rear yard setback, residential properties would hold a 40-foot setback, because that's what's permitted in the zone. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. When you have commerce, when you have a multifamily bordering on single-family residential, would you expect to see a required setback in excess of that which would be required for single-family homes?
If it's in the ordinance, sure.
Okay. Well, it's not in the ordinance here, because the ordinance requires only 40 feet, and we're at the 10 and 16. My point is, is that not only is the application not complying with the 40 feet required in a residential zone for a residential property, it's not complying for a multifamily property, which is, pick a number, 42 and 1/2, 52, or 57 feet high. So is that troubling to you in any way?
Yeah.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Mr. Kennedy, I was about to order, I think last time, consistent with the last meeting, we opened it up to board questions, then public questions, just for the experts as we go through.
Correct.
All right. Mr. Borowski, what have you done?
I am. I neglected to, I was asked because something on the record, there was an attorney who appeared at the last hearing, and her name was Karen...
Shelton.
Karen Shelton. She contacted us, and apparently she's in quarantine, so she wanted that to be put on the record, she couldn't attend the meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll open it up to board questions for Ms. Hearn. We'll start with Mr. Hutchinson. If you don't have questions, that's fine. We can always come back to her later. That's really the only word.
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. Mr. Gray.
There are only questions for airtime.
For right now, yes.
Would you deal with the AC units on the roof, the noise level?
No. I mean, we have them central, but I've not done any studies.
I don't know if you have that information somewhere, so I could ask later on. I'll ask that later. I don't have any more for Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Mary, regarding the structures, the toilet rooms and the elevator, is it two elevator towers and a central toilet room?
It's one elevator in the building, and then there are two stair towers at the end.
So those are stair towers, okay. Have you taken into consideration the visibility of those things when you're at a street level?
I have.
And...
Do you see it?
No, I cannot. Okay. That was, all right. I see a little bit of the stair tower, but not a lot. Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
That's all the questions I have.
Just for the record, you were pointing to...
I'm sorry, Exhibit A9, the rendering, the front rendering of the front of the building.
Thank you. Mr. Malanga.
No questions at this time.
Mr. Capoli.
I also have no questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
But I was ready to say, we'll bring the electric underground.
Well, I'm sure you're with your arm.
All right, Ms. Dietz.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Mr. Bazan. All right, and I have no questions either. Oh, Mr. Gray, you had something?
I'm not sure if this is for Mary or not. FAR, I remember something about FAR not including things like closets and...
Mechanical rooms.
Mechanical rooms. And I think that also included, not included, porches and garages. Is that true?
That's correct. Although some of the zones, the garage is required to be included, and I believe our engineers are ready to, and he's also...
Okay, that's an engineering question.
Well, he created the chart, so...
I'll come back to it.
Yep.
I didn't know it was for you, and I didn't want to see you get away.
Yep. No, I'm going to be here every time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hutchinson.
I guess I'm a little bit confused, because at the beginning of this meeting, we were talking about a multifamily R-75, then we're talking about R-75, and I'm just not sure, it seemed to me that there was different things that...
If I can, there's going to be testimony on the multifamily coming up.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Because it is confusing right now.
All right, that's the questions from the board. With that, we'll open it up to public questions.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just, April had one quick announcement to make.
I just wanted to put on the record that Board Member Michael Trues is now president.
Oh, thank you. Just before we move forward, Mr. Trues, did you have any questions? All right, thank you. All right, so now it's up to the public. If anybody has questions for Ms. Hearn on this application, please come forward, state your name and your question.
Mark Presto, 11013 path.
Good evening. Were you sworn in last time? I can't remember.
I was not.
Okay. You swear that information and testimony you're about to provide, it will be the truth, the best we're known to help you die.
Thank you.
And just state your name for the record, please.
Mark Presto.
And address, I'm sorry.
11013.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. [inaudible]. You testified just now that the balconies are nine feet from the property line. Did I get that correct?
The two corner ones are 10 feet, and the two that are centered to the two center units are 16.
Okay. In the rear yard setback, the proposed says 18 feet.
That's to the structure.
The structure doesn't include the balcony?
Yeah, we're 18 feet to the structure.
But the balcony sticks out first.
It does.
So wouldn't the variance have to be where the balcony goes to? That's not considered part of the structure? Maybe that's not a question for you, but a question for someone?
I think the engineer will have to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? All right, I see none. We'll close the public portion and reserve the right to come back to Ms. Hearn at a later date. Mr. Lonsky, back to you.
Thank you. Our next witness is Mr. Lonsky.
I'm out.
Do you need to state your name for the record?
Theodore J. Lamisella Jr.
I'm sorry?
Theodore J. Lamisella Jr.
A name for Lamisella?
L-A-M-I-C-E-L-L-A. I-C-E-L-L-A.
And your business address?
Six Commerce Drive, Cranford, New York.
Okay. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, to the best of your knowledge, to help you guide?
I do.
And for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
A state-certified general real estate appraiser.
I'm sorry? Say that again?
A state-certified general real estate appraiser.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Sean. Thank you.
Yes. Can you give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
Yes, I am a state-certified general real estate appraiser, and I've acted in the appraisal of real estate for the past thirty-plus years, and qualified as expert witness at the state cash worth level, state, United States bank level, various county boards of taxation, and various planning and zoning boards. And I'm also a certified tax assessor, and visiting tax assessor in the touch of the board.
Do you have some qualified, as in, your statements?
And Mr. Chairman, may I maybe ask, Mr. Borowski, if you have any objections?
No objections.
If that's okay?
No objections.
Thank you.
Well, except those credentials.
Thank you.
And just one more, do you have an opportunity to conduct the study of the subject property?
Can I? Can I hear this gentleman?
Can't hear my words.
Can't hear the gentleman asking a question.
You want to answer? Can you hear me now? Wasn't you?
Dave, you want that one?
The gentleman asking the question, we cannot.
My question is whether or not you have an opportunity to study the subject property?
Yes, I prepared an appraisal report and a feasibility study, analyzing the highest and best use of the subject property and the feasibility of redevelopment.
And in preparation for that analysis, what did you review specifically?
Well, I reviewed the information on the proposed, the proposed development. I inspected the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood, and I reviewed all of the zoning data, tax math, all the public, any of the public domain tax records on the subject property.
I'm going to let you talk and give us the benefit of your analysis and conclusions.
Sure. So the first part of the assignment was to determine the highest and best use of the subject property, which would be the maximum legal productive use, that use which gives the highest land value. Over the, based on the zoning, R-75 zoning, the subject property, and I'm talking about it as a consolidated, as a parcel, could be redeveloped and for two single-family residences. So the first part of the assignment, A, was to value the subject property as is with the two roomhouse structures and a two-family dwelling. It was a assessor appraiser approach, to ascertain the market value of the property as it sits, and the conclusion was the property's market value as of over 2021 was $3,486,000. Looking at redevelopment possibilities, these are the highest and best use, as I said, the first alternative was as zoned for two residential single-family dwellings, analyzed the sales of single-family dwellings in comparable locations, including, we'll see, Belmar and Red Beach. The conclusion, there was the single-family lots would be worth about $700,000 piece, so as zoned, the underlying land was worth $1.4 billion, again, as of over 2021.
Mr. Chair, I'm having a problem understanding the relevance of this testimony, so I have to check to this testimony. Highest investment is not something we contemplate under the municipal land use law. The value of the property is irrelevant under the municipal land use law. How much profit the developer is going to make, if that's where they're going, is irrelevant. We have standards approved under the municipal land use law that do not pertain to economic values and highest investment. So I'm going to object to this testimony unless someone can explain to me the relevance.
I think that you're testifying against the feasibility of development and unit inventories that would be required, in order for a developer to redevelop the properties.
Mr. Kennedy, I would ask you to weigh in on this. I'm struggling with this one, too. Not that I would deny the application testimony, I don't quite understand what we're hearing here.
Yeah. So, Mr. Lonsky, say it again, the purpose of this testimony is as follows?
I mean, we're developing a feasibility analysis...
Please use your mic.
We're developing a feasibility analysis that will include an analysis that eventually will include that there's no economic detriment to the surrounding areas, and that there's positive economic gain to the property, which is part of a feasibility analysis that, I mean, quite frankly, we've done before, we've presented the basis on the down-to-earth landscaping matter for this testimony, and I think it's relevant and important to put on the record for the analysis that will ultimately be done also by the planner.
I renew my objection, Mr. Chair. The applicants are aware of the standard approved required under the municipal land use law. Values are irrelevant in terms of satisfying that standard, special reasons, particular suitability, negative criteria. So on that basis, I object to the relevance of this testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Mr. Kennedy, is there...
Sure. What I would suggest is we note Mr. Borowski's objections to the record, and we note, you know, your stated concerns as well. Again, they're valid concerns because economics is typically not an issue in conjunction. So, Mr. Lonsky, can you possibly keep this on a short leash and bring it to the...
I will. It was just a matter of providing some foundation for the testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
My understanding was the other option for development in the zone was an overlay for potentially 13 townhouses on the subject property. My analysis concluded the market value of that use would be $1,105,000. So of the permitted uses...
I'm sorry, what was that number?
For the permitted uses of the subject property as approved, the value is in excess of, I mean, two times to three and a half times the underlying land would be worth as zoned. So the next step in our assignment was to analyze the financial feasibility of redeveloping such a site with 24 condominiums. In that analysis, we analyzed what the potential sell-out would be. That conclusion was the units would average 725,000 per unit, tackling the land acquisition costs, the development costs, sell-off costs, the included overall value at 24 units would indicate a market value of $17,400,000. The development costs totaled approximately $16,68, that would leave a profit of $630,000, or 3.62% on a $17,400 project, which indicated that the development at 24 units would not be feasible. Alternatively, at 32 units on the subject site, utilizing the same criteria, and cost associated, that would redevelop a profit of 9.23%, which is in line with developers typically with safety of the subject, I'm developing. So in my view, the 24 units is a tight window, and 32 units is much more feasible for this type of development. Finally, we were also asked to opine on the, on the relationship between the current development site and its impact on surrounding properties, and the new development and its impact on the subject properties, surrounding properties. Our analysis was that the subject as developed currently, roughly 51 combined roomhouse rooms, a two-family dwelling, is a, would consider to be a high-impact property, because there are high-impact, lots of comings and goings as opposed to single-family residential-type dwellings. Those type of properties have a negative impact on the surrounding properties on average between, somewhere between negative 5 and 10%, whereas the subject as we developed with single-family, single-unit owners would not be a sort of high-impact property. The design, the appeal, and the values that those units would sell for would have a enhanced impact on value of the surrounding neighborhood properties.
I just wanted to summarize. The first part of your analysis, you concluded that it would take, in your opinion, a 32-unit condominium development in order for the developer to achieve a 9.23% return on his investment, when you take into account the cost of construction, the cost of acquisition, carrying costs, et cetera?
Correct.
And in your analysis, the 24 units as proposed would only generate approximately a 3%, which you believe was below-market, and in your opinion, would not be a development that you would consider should be moved forward. Is that correct? And then the other thing that you addressed is the impact of the current properties, the current uses of the properties, on the surrounding areas?
Correct.
And it's your opinion that there is a negative impact of a 5% to 10% of value on the surrounding areas as a result of the existing uses?
That's correct.
And the last thing I believe that you indicated was that the proposed development on the site, in your opinion, would not cause a negative impact on the surrounding areas, and that it would actually enhance the value of the surrounding properties?
That's correct.
And in arriving at the second conclusion regarding the proposed development, are there examples of other properties of a similar character in the surrounding area that you can bring to the attention of the board that led you to the conclusion that you brought?
Well, from what I worked on the roomhouse, approximately, about two years ago, there was an assignment in town for a roomhouse, we did a similar analysis, and I think that overall, when you look at developments, significant developments like the subject plan here, those sales prices not only impact the subject, but impact the surrounding neighborhood, and when the neighborhood becomes desirable, it spreads throughout the neighborhood, and that's basic for property valuation, so.
Let me ask you directly. You're familiar with the Breakers Hotel in Spring Lake?
Yes.
Has that negatively, has that use negatively impacted the surrounding areas?
Yes.
And how is it?
I think that the surrounding properties are less desirable, and therefore, the market value of those properties are less desirable. It's just, it's not complicated, it's pretty straightforward in real property valuation. Thank you.
Was that it, Mr. Lonsky?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Borowski, Mr. Cross.
Good evening, Mr. Lamisella.
Evening.
I have some questions for you, but I just, this is the one that's really intriguing to me. So you testified that 32 units would be better for the developer because the developer would get a higher rate of return, correct?
Well, it's not just for the developer. The assignment was feasibility, and in my view, 24 units would be feasible, because the return is not enough to, for the outlay expense.
24 units would not be feasible?
That's correct.
But that's what they're proposing?
I understand.
So they're proposing something that's not feasible?
They didn't ask me to, they didn't tell me what to conclude it to, they asked me to do the stuff.
I see. Okay. So your professional testimony as an appraiser here this evening is that the application that's for the board is not financially feasible, in your opinion?
At a 3.62% return.
Okay. Do you know why, then, the developer is proposing it if it's not financially feasible?
I'm estimating their, I assume the market is going to continue to increase, and maybe they'll make it up on the back end.
So they're going to build it at a loss now, in the hopes that it increases down the road?
Can you say anything about...
What did you say? I'm sorry. Just repeat what you just said, because I think I thought I heard.
They may be thinking, I don't know this...
Who would know? Who would I ask that?
The developer.
Okay, go ahead.
They just asked me my opinion on feasibility. I don't know what's in his head.
Okay.
However, if there was something, there is a small profit based on... However, if there was something, there is a small profit based on this development. The market currently for probably the last 18 months has been increasing. My value is as of August 24th, 2021. There may be a thought that as the market continues to increase, as the buildings are under ground, maybe they pick up a higher sell price and more progress.
Okay. So for today, though, 24 units is not feasible?
I don't think most developers would go forward at 3.6.
32 units, though, in your opinion, is feasible?
Correct. That's more in line with the.
And would more units be more feasible?
Well, of course.
Okay. So is there a reason why the developer isn't proposing 50 units?
Well, from my perspective, the typical return on something like this at minimum is 10%. So at 32, it was 9.6% around to 10%. That would be a standard where I think most developers would go forward. Now, sure, we could say 50, 100, but the question was, the assignment was feasibility, and at 32 units, it met the criteria that most developers require for return.
And is it your test? Okay, so 32 units work, 24 don't work, now maybe it'll work in the future. What about, what about two units that, which are permitted in the zone?
Yeah, two, two single-family.
Correct.
Lots.
Yes.
A lot worth 1.1 million.
Yes.
You wouldn't redevelop a property worth 3.4 million, something like at 1.1 million. So the way to go, other development.
So you're saying the property cannot be developed with two single-family homes?
I'm saying it can be.
Okay.
High-SU says to do not do that.
And can you direct me where in the municipal land use law it provides that, that the developer's profitability somehow justifies the request for the granting of a variance?
I just completed my assignment.
Okay. All right. Let me just step back now. So you indicated you did, first of all, you indicated you're an assessor in Wall Township, right? Any issue with you testifying here this evening?
No.
Okay. There's no case law out there or regulations that preclude you from testifying?
No, not at all.
Okay. So your appraisal report that you prepared, has that been submitted to the board?
I don't know. I supplied it to the material. Today, correct?
It does not.
Okay, today. Mr. Chair, I would ask that if it could be submitted, then I would request a copy as well, so could I review it? I'm interested in seeing the comparables and the basis for the conclusions that the applicant is proposing, a development that's not feasible.
Can you refly that?
We will, we'll supply him a copy at the end of the hearing, and I'm also very comfortable talking about feasibility and my mindset irrespective of what our experts say. And candidly, if I want to build this and take a chance, get rid of the Belmont Inn and the Animal House type suit that we acquired, I take a loss. I'm a big boy. I'll take a loss.
I'm just requesting, we can, we can talk about that later, but I'm just.
We wanted another answer to the questions, but this is not a non-feasible, it's not feasible for any property and all those other people, but maybe we should define. He asked me some questions.
I'm gonna, I definitely have some questions for you as the applicant when we get down there, and you're making me stammer because I'm a little out of order here, but I'm trying to finish up the cross-examination of the.
Appraiser.
I know. The truth is, is that you're blowing out of the water every zoning requirement in the ordinance.
Listen, Mr. Brodsky.
And you're coming in and telling the board the basis for that is your return.
Okay, listen, we're gonna just get out of control. So the question was, can you submit a copy to the appraisal report? And Dave, you can submit one, and would you submit it to Mr. Brodsky tomorrow, but also submit one to April so she has it for the board records? Thank you.
And I would ask that Mr. Lamisella return so that we could cross-examine him on the content of the report.
Is that acceptable?
Well, that's, if we don't, if we finish tonight, I want to get to the end of this. My hope is that we can finish this.
The entire application?
Yes.
Okay. If we don't, can we reserve the right to bring back Mr. Lamisella and ask him additional questions?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Brodsky?
Well, I do want the opportunity to review it and cross it, so I don't see how we can do that tonight, because I don't have it.
All right, we can address that later on.
Sure.
Absolutely.
I can change it.
Okay. Let me just go back to some other questions as I stammer and struggle to understand your testimony and the relevance of it. So you testified that, you talked about an option for development to build 13 townhomes. What are you talking about?
It was told to me by the client that there is an overlay of the zoning for the subject property that would allow for the development of 13 townhouses.
As a permitted use?
Correct.
No variances?
That was my understanding.
Okay.
So it was part of the analysis.
That's good. You talked about the relevance of 24 units being marginally feasible in terms of return to a development, for a development, right?
Yes.
And that's based on the current market value of the property?
That is based on the value of the property. If it was approved for 24 units.
Versus?
The lobby worth versus its current zoning and its current improvement.
Right, but isn't the starting point what the value of the property is? How do you calculate the return if you're not calculating, if you're not incorporating the cost basis in the property?
I'm doing all of that. It was, it was a multi-tiered analysis to first find out what is the value of the property as of, what you can do with it.
And you determine that how?
I determine that by analyzing it as being redeveloped for two single-family residential s, for 13 condominiums, and for the development as a redeveloped with 24 and/or 13 condos.
In order to calculate the return, wouldn't you have to take into consideration the cost paid by the developer for the property?
Yes, that's all.
Okay. So is it your testimony, then, that your feasibility determination, to the extent it's relevant, is based on what a developer elects to pay for the property?
Well, but I also love that.
Well, yes or no on that one first?
Would the developer or would he develop?
What, I want to know what this developer paid for the property if you're testifying as to what the return is going to be.
This developer paid 3.9 million, two portions.
Okay.
So that was the calculation, the analysis of the return on it.
So would a developer who was taking into account the zoning that's permitted in the zone, in your opinion, pay that much money for the property?
The sell price on the subject properties was in line towards the higher end of the range for developments, was in line with other developments.
All right, I didn't understand that. The purchase price, you're saying that the price that was paid for these two, well, for one property, the other property is a contract, is under contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you're taking into account the contract purchase price for the, for the larger site, correct?
Correct.
And is that contract purchase price contingent on obtaining zoning approvals?
It is.
And is it contingent on obtaining zoning approvals for a minimum of a certain number of units?
Probably 24 units.
24 units. So that your starting point on the valuation of the property is based on the assumption that this property can be developed for 24 units, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so if this were to be denied, the property would, would not be, and the property would not to be approved for 24 units, what would it be worth at that point?
But as, it would remain, the high-SU's would remain as developed, and that market value is, let's see again, $3,486,000.
That number reflects what?
That number reflects the market value of the subject properties as currently approved.
As currently approved.
Improved.
So it's worth the same now as it would be worth if it were approved for 24 units?
No.
I think, I think he said as currently improved?
Correct.
Not approved.
Improved.
Improved.
Okay.
So it's worth $800,000 less as approved than if it's approved for 24 units development.
So.
High-SU should be to tear these buildings down if it got that.
Right. And so, so are you suggesting that the contract purchase price for the property as improved currently would be only $500,000 less than the value of that dirt once it has 24 units approved for it?
No, that's not, that's 3.4 million, that's not dirt, that's currently approved.
Correct.
So I'm saying the dirt as approved, the worth of $800,000 worth, the property's worth now improved.
As approved?
As approved.
Okay, right. I lost you. The property, the property as improved today, as it exists today, what's the market value?
$3,486,000.
$3,3.4 was the amount. And what is your testimony that the property is worth once it is approved, if it is approved for 24 condominium units?
It'll be worth a minimum of the purchase price of 3.9 million dollars.
Okay, okay. So you're saying that the current, the current property at 3.4 is worth 500,000 less than the property would be worth if these approvals were attached to it?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm wondering why, then, someone wouldn't just buy the property for 3.4 and not go through the approval process, but we'll come back to that.
So the land is worth more than the approved property? That says it's time to build.
Got it. And I guess my question is, though, I'm looking for the magic or the justification for proposing 24 condo units with the, you know, with the array of variances that are necessary here versus developing the property as permitted under the zoning.
Well, because I mean the zoning, the land is worth, at best, 1.5 million, it was the 13 townhouses. So that means you would not redevelop the property. The property, the way it is, is worth 3.4 million. You're always going to tear the buildings down and use 2.1 million because I want to build a house.
So this is a no-brainer?
No-brainer.
No-brainer. I'm wondering, do you have an opinion as to why the governing body has not changed the zoning for this property?
I don't.
Okay. Now, it's not your testimony, oh, sorry, let me go back. You talked about the high impact, you mentioned high impact. Was that in the context of the current use of the property?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the project that's over your right shoulder, would you categorize that as high impact?
No.
Okay. And so fits in perfectly in the R75 zone, in your opinion?
The comparison was to the subject property as currently approved with 51 rooming house rooms and two-family dwelling as opposed to 24 old single-family residences, the apartment and the impact of the comparison.
Got it. And your conclusion is that the property is worth more for, if the approvals were obtained as requested here, than what it would be worth if it was developed for its permitted uses, correct?
Not even close.
Not even close. Do you see any negative impact on surrounding properties with respect to the, as the result of the construction of the 24-unit multifamily versus the permitted use, let's say, of two single-family homes?
Well, I analyze it with the, the future development compared to what's currently situated at the subject property. And in that case, this is clearly more positive for the surrounding properties than the way it's currently situated.
Well, but that's not my question. My question is, would you, would it be your opinion that there would be more of a negative impact on the surrounding properties from the development of this property as a permitted use versus what's proposed?
If it was developed with two single-family houses as permitted?
Yes.
Is that more positive? I'm saying, we're asking, is that more positive than this?
I'm asking you if that, what effect that, if you think that this would have a better impact on those surrounding properties than if it was developed as two single-family units as what is permitted?
Well, I think that.
From a financial perspective, right? I'm not asking with zoning question.
Right. So I think financially, when you look at two sales at X as opposed to 24 sales at X, I think the economic impact is much more dramatic with this development as opposed to two additional single-family houses in the neighborhood.
So then, if I understand you correctly, your testimony is that the market value of, let's take my client's property as an example, which backs up right to this, that it's, it's your testimony that their property value would be improved more looking out to the 24 units at 57 feet versus two single-family homes in accordance with what's permitted in the zone?
Yeah, Wayne.
I mean, is that, is that it? It's easy. Is that your answer, yes?
Correct.
Got it. No further questions, no, Mr. Hugson.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Certainly, Mr. Brodsky.
When, when you valued the properties as they are today, you valued only the real estate aspect of it, not the ongoing business aspect of the Belmont Inn, is that correct?
Correct, just the real property.
So there would be a, if you were buying that business, you'd be paying a premium on top of the real estate, the existing conditions of the real estate for the ongoing business profit?
Whatever business is there, that's correct. Circuits.
Sorry, that's it.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to more questions for Mr. Lamisella. We'll head down to Mr. Hudson.
No questions in this time, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
I just want to clarify this, and I'm understanding that all this conversation is about profit and loss, and that doesn't enter into our decision whatsoever, correct?
Correct.
So I understand that you're trying to go somewheres with this and you're using it as backup information, and I would, I would have a couple of, some serious questions on the numbers here, but I'm not going to ask them, only because it doesn't affect our final decision. So I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm not sure if this is a question or just a statement. You had mentioned the possibility of 13 townhomes, and Mr. Brodsky asked a question relative, and you said that there would be no variances. I just wanted to correct you on that because unless we see the proposal for those townhomes, variances may be necessary or likely, so I just wanted to just revisit that comment because you can't make a statement that it would require no variances of 13 townhomes.
Well, I think, my understanding was there's an overlay that allowed the 13s as for.
That's allowed, but you can't make a statement as to whether or not variances are going to be needed until we see what those townhomes are being proposed.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I can say. That's all, just want to make sure we're correct on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Malaga.
No questions.
Mr. Capoli.
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Deans.
No questions at this time.
Mr. Palmasano. And Mr. Druze. I have no questions either. With that, we'll open it up to the public for any questions for Mr. Lamisella. I see one coming up.
Hello, name and address, please.
Brett Lomas, 609 Main Street.
Have you been out previously before?
I believe I was, but I'll do it again.
All right, we'll do it again. One more discussion. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. You mentioned that the, that the breakers in Sprint Lake negatively impacted the, the value of the surrounding homes. So if the breakers was replaced with single-family homes, do you think that that would be a benefit? Would that more positively impact the value of the surrounding homes?
As a general principle, residential properties that are in the close proximity to commercial or high-impact properties are impacted negatively by those properties. And that's, the impact is lessened as you get further from the impacted property, the high-impact property. And if that was redeveloped, that negative impact, the stigma would go away, those would, those values should increase going forward.
Okay. So then, let's say you're considering buying two houses. One is next door to the proposed development and one is on another street that does not have this proposed development right next door. Your testimony is that the one next to this would be worth more money than the one that's next to houses?
Well, the question to me was, will the, will the economics impact me? And what I'm saying is a general principle. We have 24 sales that are going to start out at a sell price. And by the time you get to 24, the sell price may be completely different. And those increases in values are going to impact all the other properties because it's a principle of substitution. You can get a one-unit, two-bedroom condo right here for $750, or I can get a three-bedroom, single-family with a yard. Well, that's also worth. That one goes for nine, you know, eight, and then nine will also find, goes for one. That's just a general principle of real estate. I'm an expert in, uh, Brice Star and Park, and I think similarly, the, especially with the newest tower, even though those really have, aesthetically and structural-wise, they are just similar to most of the other, all the other building. As those, um, apartments sold increase and increase and increase, the surrounding properties that were nothing like that property, but still, uh, single-family or multifamily developments, uh, those properties also increase as similarly.
So, um, and on another, another front, I guess. As far as the, you were talking about highest of its use. Wouldn't, like, as a resident, wouldn't I be able to justify, you know, getting lots of different use variances and C variances, bulk variances? If it meant that I was able to make my house or my property more valuable, shouldn't I be able to ignore all those ordinances also, or?
Those questions are...
Like, where does that lead us down the road if every property owner feels like they should be able to get, you know, lots and lots of different high-intens, high-intensity variances to maximize what they can get out of their little parcel of land?
Well, the, the assignment was the feasibility of redevelopment of the subject site. So we saw the highest of use, and that's use of that site based on where it's currently zoned. There would be no, uh, no incentive to redevelop that property. So the zoning would be worth about a third or less than it's worth as approved.
So, but I guess my question is, my house, if I could ignore their ordinances for development, I would be able to build condos and make more money? Is that precedent that we're trying to set here?
Well, not as an appraisal, I'm just here to show some feasibility of the site.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lomas. Anyone else?
Steve Bloom, 704 Hay Street.
I'm sorry, is that your last name?
Bloom, B-L-O-M.
All right, good evening. And do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
So, my backyard is to the Belmarin, so everybody knows that. And I have a great interest in this. So, if two single-family homes were built in place of this, the value of all the neighbors, the value of their homes would go down? But if this was built, the value of their homes would go up?
That's not what I said.
So the value of their homes would go up with single-family homes that are supposed to be built in the neighborhood for single families, correct?
The, I, I believe the value of homes surrounding the subject property as present, if that was redeveloped with two single-family homes, those values would increase.
Thank you. Okay. Do you know where the Mayfair Hotel is? On the corner of, uh, 10th and Ocean?
I can, I can buy it.
Okay. Suppose that was knocked down and they wanted to build single-family homes over there? With the values of the homes on Ocean Avenue and on the, on the side street going down towards Hay Street, would the value of those homes go up? Or if they put a building like this, would those, value of those homes go down?
Well, if you see...
I'm talking about just the value of a house, that's all, simple house.
I understand what you, the question, the two are not mutually exclusive. Uh, the value of homes would go up if this was redeveloped with two single-family houses. The value would also, in my view, increase as it's currently developed. And I believe the impact of this development would have a more significant impact because of the number of units in the sellout.
Okay. So this big buil, building, this box, so high-density, this, this would have a, a negative impact on the neighbors?
This?
Yeah.
No, this is not considered high-density. So it's a large building.
It's a large building. It's 140, 60 feet by 140 feet.
Maybe I, it's not, uh, what I say is high impact. Yes. It's a higher density, uh, there's a lower impact than it was currently developed at the subject property.
We don't care what's there. We're talking about what can be put there. Okay? But the Belmarin is not the subject of this. The Belmarin is, if it's not there, what can be built there? Townhomes, or as Ms. Delonsky said, it's developed for MF. MF is multi, is a cluster. If you look at the, the master plan, it says, not this, multifamily cluster type townhomes. It says it in the master plan, townhomes. So if you build townhomes there, what's the problem?
Not feasible.
Okay. It's not feasible.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Arnie McCall, 1100A, I'm his neighbor, and...
Yeah, I'm just going to square you in, that's okay. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I was also a mark Realtor. And I was showing marks homes all over. Now, I'm going to get to this appraisal bit. I showed mark homes all over Bradley Beach and Belmar. And anytime we had a building like this, whether it was townhomes, it blocked the views, it made it super windy, or not windy at all. It put you in the shade. Mark, do you remember how many houses you didn't buy from him?
Yes, I did.
He painted a building on 13th Avenue where the Tropical Pub was.
Ms. McCall, if I could interrupt and just ask you to focus your questions to Mr. Lamisella?
I'm trying to get there.
Thank you.
No, just because you had said that this high-density building does not affect the neighborhood. It affects us greatly. Mary Hearn is a beautiful plan. Bill Shipers gets many variances here in town, and we're all for it. I'm living next to a development where the Belmar Arcade was, and he was able to build 13 homes where only five should have been allowed. Now we're trying to build 24 homes, super high, and you're saying that that's more valuable. I, I don't find the relation. And in the beginning of the thing, you had said $600,000 per lot. So if they're paying 3.4 or 3.9, as a Realtor, I think it's too much. But I understand there's the business and there's the building and the property. But I'm trying to get to my point. If you were to build, because we don't care about profits. We just don't want high-density in our towns. We don't want these structures there. And we care about what our property values are. So my home, which should be in the back, there'd be people looking into my bathrooms and my living rooms and onto my porches, and it's frustrating for us. So we don't care about that. But if you were to build four single-family homes, like they did where the Tropical Pub was, or the arcade where I was, where I am, where I'm building, if you were to do that, you can sell each home for 2.5 to 3 million dollars each.
Ms. McCall, respectfully, you need, you can make a statement later on.
I'm trying to...
That's very important, but I have this for that.
No, I'm just saying...
Mr. Kennedy, I'm, I'm going to, I must object, even though, oh, oh, cancel. Ms. McCall, one, is trying to testify as a real estate expert.
I said I'm a Realtor, I didn't say I was an expert.
Her follow-up. She's citing facts that are not accurate. She, she's asking questions without proper foundation. She's misquoting, she's misquoting the Tropical Pub subdivision, how many lots? She's misquoting the Clayland, how many lots?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was 11, I'm not sure.
She's misquoting potential sale prices. So she can't ask this kind of compound, intricate question.
I'm asking if there were four homes...
Mr. Chairman, what I, what I would suggest is, we have to operate within...
I'm, I'm trying to get there.
Okay, so I have to get there.
I'm, I'm trying, but I need to...
Speech should be strict.
We, we just, we're not going to strike. If you could ask, just ask what your question is and let Mr. Lamisella try to answer it.
Your feasibility is for the profit line of them. Most of us here don't care about the profit. But if there were to be four homes built, let's say you're into the property, you pay 995 for the one lot, 3.9 for another, you tear it down, you have architects, you have professionals, you, you build four homes for $900,000 each, you could still make a profit of over...
So is that your question? If you were to build four single-family homes, wouldn't there be a profit?
There'd still be a profit.
And your response is?
Our analysis is a single-family lot is $700,000. Four lots would be 2.8 million. The subject property as currently developed is worth 3.4 million. You wouldn't tear down the current property to develop four houses.
And I have to argue the $700,000 lot. They're worth over 1.2 each. I, I have a problem with the numbers. I have a problem with the appraisal saying that this is what they're worth. When, I wish there was five more Realtors in here. They tell us all the lots are worth 1.2.
Well, okay, but, but, and that's going to come up on, in the comments. Right now, if you have any other questions, you're making important comments, but that'll, that'll be later on.
All right. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the, from Mr. Lamisella? Please come forward. And let us remind everybody, this is the time to ask questions of Mr. Lamisella on his expert testimony.
Name and address, please.
Beth Minne, 308 12th Avenue, Belmar, New Jersey.
Thank you. Beth Minne.
M-A-N-E.
Okay, thank you. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
I just spent the whole day on the beach reading the master plan, highlighting everything. And I am, I'm just confused. Maybe you can explain to me, how come when the ordinance number 2004-15 eliminated multifamily districts, how we can even be entertaining the building of a multifamily unit? And also, in line with that...
We know, can we just ask, review that one at a time?
Sure, okay.
I, I was giving, I gave it an assignment.
Is part of your job when giving an assignment to review the master plan of the town where you're, you're going to be building something?
Well, the assignment included what the current property is currently, uh, how it's currently approved, what the zoning was, and would be the feasibility of a change in zone. So that was my, that was the criteria I was given.
So if the zoning is R-75 and it's not, and multifamily is eliminated from the master plan, how does that fit in? I'm confused.
They're requesting a change in that, and they were asking me to apply for the feasibility of that change.
Okay. I also happened to read some of the statutes, um, 36-2.3, and it says that zoning boards, municipalities should make zoning decisions by ordinance rather than variance. So are you familiar with that aspect of the statutes as well?
I'm sorry, for the planner?
That's really, I, uh, goes outside of my expertise, as well as...
What, what he's saying is, is, that's an excellent question, and there's going to be another witness that will, you can address that to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I see more from the public. Let us remind the public that Mr. Lamisella gave expert testimony on real estate appraisal values. And I would offer that this is a time for questions of Mr. Lamisella on his expert testimony and nothing beyond that. Thank you.
Name and address?
Kevin Brennan, 605 Fifth Ave.
All right, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm looking for an opinion upon the perspective of somebody who owns a house across the street or behind it. Would the value increase more with an amenity deck up top or without an amenity deck? Knowing what could go on on an amenity deck up there? For the property, for an adjacent property, I should say.
I think the amenity deck adds value to the subject units.
Correct.
And as those, as those units sell out and increase in value, I think that, um, uh, flows to all the neighboring properties. So I think the more desirable you make the subject property, the higher impact it has on the market value of surrounding properties.
I got a little confused there. I'm, I'm asking a question, compared the amenity deck versus the non, and not a, at the end of the, you know, road here, what are we selling? Present value, day one, does the amenity deck add value to an adjacent property, in your opinion, or does it detract from it?
I think it adds value because it adds to the overall project.
Project of an adjacent property?
Yeah, of, of this project.
Right. But in terms, you, you had commented on adjacent property values, correct? And that's where I'd like your answer, not that property, but the adjacent property.
What, what I'm saying there, uh, there is a relationship between the success of the development and the amount of increase in value of the surrounding properties. And I think, um, and I think that, uh, one might think a roof deck like that, um, on a rooming house that's currently there would be a different ambience than 24 units that single-family buyers bought for in excess of $700,000. Well, I think, I understand where you're, I think I started coming from. I think for this property...
You're saying the clientele wouldn't party as much? Is that what you mean? In, in short terms?
I don't know. We're probably more responsibly.
Okay.
Then, uh, someone else? Any rooming house that's not going to be there next week?
Oh, okay. Understood.
Name and address, please?
Elisa Cohen, ELI, SSA, COHGN, 10916th Avenue.
Okay, good evening. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide it, will be the truth, the best you know of, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, just, I'm seeking clarification, please. Did I understand, you had mentioned that the rooming house as it is now negatively impacts the surrounding properties?
Correct.
And you base this on a comparable that you've looked at two years ago?
No, no, no. This is a fundamental principle in real estate evaluation that I see every day all the single-family residential properties bordering high-impact commercial properties are without question negatively impacted by that property. And the impact... And the impact lessens as you get further away, until maybe the next block, then there's no effect. And that is for any type of commercial property within a single-family residential neighborhood. And when you get more high-impact that property is, the more negative the impact of value has.
Okay, but didn't you testify that you looked at a property two years ago?
Well, somebody asked a question about, when there was another rooming house in town that was getting redeveloped about two years ago that I worked on, and referenced that. I don't remember what the question was, but that was the reason I referenced it, because it was in town, very similar to the subject property redevelopment than to single-family residences.
Okay, I guess, because my question was, were the market conditions two years ago the same as they are now?
Well, the market conditions are different, but the fact that high-impact commercial properties, neighboring residential properties negatively impact that, I've been doing this for 35 years, that has not changed. So if the market is up 12%, you're already down five because you're a neighbor, and so you're up 12, you're still down five from the next one. So that doesn't change.
Okay, and you're also, okay, thank you. Also, you were testifying that the density of this property as proposed is not going to negatively affect the surrounding properties. So the number of residents that are in there, the traffic patterns and such, that's not going to affect the surrounding properties, is that what you're testifying to?
Well, so we already have a high-impact property there. This property, which can generate 24 new sales, the increase in impact those sales would have on the surrounding market could be very significant and outweigh certainly the negative impacts that are currently in the subject property, and could just outweigh any perceived impacts of this type of development. It's about 24 sales, the market, one sale, two sales, not more.
Yes, but the number of residents within that particular property, you're testifying that that's not going to negatively impact the surrounding properties because there are so many more people in there, and the number of vehicles and such, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's already a high-impact property at the subject property. That's not changing.
So how many people are in that property now?
Well, there are 51 total rooming house units. One of them is allowed, the block is saved, so that would be at least 62 plus the two-family house. So you're looking at, at minimum, I would say, close to 70.
And how many would be in the property?
Well, we say 24 at three occupants, 72. The difference is, is we even have a similar number of occupants. The difference is, these occupants live here, they own the property, they're actually down for the weekend and do whatever they do, and then going back to wherever they live.
How do you know that?
I'm sorry?
How do you know that?
Well.
I mean, they could be Airbnb, you know, I mean, it's once the property is sold, correct?
There are, there are maybe other opportunities to do something with those units, but of the majority of the 24 units, in my view, would be only occupied by residents who want to own or occupy the property.
Okay, I have one last question regarding the approach that you did in valuation. Which approaches did you use or didn't use?
I used the sales comparison approach pretty much throughout the analysis for all land valuation, that is the most appropriate approach. The two-family house, really, the sales comparison approach is the most appropriate approach. And for the rooming houses, again, we use the sales comparison approach. Could have used an income approach if had all the economic data from the other sales, which we didn't, but using the sales comparison approach is probably acceptable.
Okay, I'm just curious why you didn't, because it sounds like you used the income approach, you know, when you're talking about how you came up with those numbers.
Well, we're doing two different things here. So on the one hand, we're analyzing the value of real estate, and for the appraisal part, it was all the sales comparison approach. And for the feasibility analysis, while it was still sales comparison approach, it goes, they're applying the unit itself, work based on comparable sales. The only, so that kind of is the overall income, and then we'll just deduct typical expenses to find out or to analyze if the property, if the proposed development of the property is feasible or not. So it's really all sales comparison approach, and just deducting costs to find out about feasibility.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Koda Najar, 102 12th Ave.
Hey, how's your last name?
N-A-G-I-A-R.
Okay, good evening and welcome. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide to the extent you provide will be the truth, best your knowledge, help you guide? Thank you.
So sir, I don't see that your analysis is really comprehensive, because you only point to the benefits, but not to the negatives. You did not mention anything about the aesthetic, which really would change the landscape of the area. It would happen, in fact, even compared to what we have now, with all the people in and out, not everybody in Belmar, and I live very close, don't do have cars, right? Airbnb, that would be another issue. So I don't see that your analysis is objective enough to really give comfort to the audience.
Yeah, I believe that's a fair statement. I think what I'm looking at is, what is currently constituted as a property, and what, A, was the feasibility, and B, was the impact of this development? And I think this, as compared to what is currently there, would clearly have a more positive impact than what's currently situated at the subject property.
I don't think so. I really don't believe so.
Disagree.
Because, I mean, there's people here, this is their home, and this is going to impact the value of their home. This is going to impact the, how, I mean, the privacy of their home. So don't tell me that this is positive, because it's not.
Is there a question?
That is my comment, but my, I don't think, as I.
Ms. McNair?
That it was not comprehensive, and it should be comprehensive, because it's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear anyone else with questions from Mr. Lamisella? All right, I see none. We're going to close the public portion, and with that, I would recommend that we take a 15-minute break, and come back on the record at 8:30. Can you just state your name and business address for the record?
Yes, Richard DiFalco, D-I-F-O-L-C-O, address 49 Namoco Road, Freehold, New Jersey, JKR Engineering, Licensed Engineer and Planner, Kent, New Jersey.
Okay, and do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best your knowledge, help you guide?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as an engineer and a planner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
First thing I'm going to do is mark a, what's our next number?
A29. Do you want red? Yes, 29. Mr. Lonsky, is there something that we have?
This is, I'm going to just have the office explain a little bit, but it's the parking lot configuration deal at one point.
All right, so it's the parking lot configuration plan. Is there a date on it?
Today's date.
August 26, 2021, and it's prepared by whom?
Chris.
Chris Carr.
All right. And we're going to mark that as A29. You know, just for the record, and I know Mr. DiFalco's been here before, but can you maybe just put his name on the record?
Licensed engineer since 1977, attended Rutgers University College of Engineering, licensed planner since 1981, testified before this board and the planning board in Belmar many dozens of times in the last 20 years, as well as other towns and municipalities in Mammoth, Middlesex, and Ocean County, as a planner and engineer.
Are we actually being accepted as engineer and planner?
Mr. Fronsky, did you have any objection?
Never heard of it.
Thank you. We'll accept those questions.
Thank you. Want to switch places? Go ahead.
Lot of maps. Is he going to ask a question? Do you want me to go? All right, so, what can I with the site? In the borough, the Belmar Inn and the property to the east, lot 12 and 13.
What exhibit are you referencing now?
This is A26, which is the cover sheet of the ninth sheet set of plans. This sheet gives the zoning criteria, as well as identifies the location, the flood map, and the zoning map. Also, there's another exhibit, this is. This needs to be marked, the next number.
Is it A30?
And what is A30?
A30 is a zone criteria chart, which compares the R75 zone criteria to the MF75 conditional use criteria, and lists the condition of the Belmar Inn alone, the Belmar Inn and the lot to the north, the 2018 proposal by the applicant, and the 2021 proposal by the applicant.
All right, so what I'm going to do is, is there a date on that?
There is not.
Why don't you put today's date, August 26, 2021, and by whom is that prepared?
That was prepared by me and Mr. Lonsky's office together.
Okay. And could you possibly, tomorrow, maybe, or the next day, next week, send a, oh, you have a renewed copy? Excellent. Thank you.
This is going to be A?
A30.
A30.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, do you have copy?
I should. Maybe we can get some to the public and back.
So the reason we did that second exhibit, which is A30, was because we're here tonight to get rid of the Belmar Inn and the property to the east. We're not here tonight to build two single-family homes, and the only way to do a project of this nature is to construct something that is feasible. The borough, back in 2007, I believe, adopted the ordinance for the NF75 zone, and knew that there had to be something done with properties. This map.
Market.
Market, yeah, A31.
A31. Prepared by? A31 is?
It's the multifamily cluster development ordinance, 2008, not 2007, 2008-07, and it lists the ordinance, the verbiage of the ordinance, as well as a graphic of what the preamble says where it applies in the borough.
All right, is there a date on that?
There will be today's date.
Was that put together by your office?
Again, my office and Mr. Lonsky's office.
Thank you.
Date today.
And this is a copy of your?
Oh. You know, I'm going to mark this too. A32 is a copy of the.
That's what's on.
Oh, okay, got it.
All right, so having that in your hands, now you can see the R75 zone, which is situated is where this property is, there's a conditional use provision that if your lot is 14,000 square feet or larger, you can apply a different set of criteria than the single-family home criteria. The map that's on A31 shows Ocean Avenue to the bottom, A Street, and then it shows 10th, 11th, and 12th. That rectangle is where the MF75 is applicable in Belmar. Just those three blocks. The only areas... Do you have that map? No, okay, well, this is the tax map. But the orange-colored areas are the only three parcels that are at least 14,000 square feet. One is the Belmar Inn, one is the Mayfair, one is property already developed as condos at 120 10th Avenue, and one is already developed as multi-family at 102 10th Avenue. These two sites probably will not get redeveloped since they've been already developed as multi-family units. So the two remaining areas in that zone that are potentially available for redevelopment are the Mayfair and the Belmar Inn. We believe that when the borough adopted this ordinance, they knew that those were not ideal places to have in the borough, and that it was a way to get a transitional zone with increased density, as they call it, a transition between single-family and high-density. So they have a set of standards they came up with, which we follow that, 113, 114 units. We can get 13 and 1/2, if you round up, it's 14. Townhouses on this property. They do not have a far requirement in the MF75 zone. They are allowed to have three full stories, not two and a half, three full stories. They're allowed to be 35 feet tall. More importantly, the neighbors are concerned about this being close to the property line. The MF75 zone allows the structure 35 feet tall, no variance, to be 10 feet from the property line. That's the code. It's not asked for a variance, that's the code. That even gets reduced further, depends on your accessway, that setback can reduce down to six feet, I believe, in certain instances. So the borough knew that these particular parcels needed something, some incentive to get them to be developed, because single-family homes can't replace a $3.5 million business. The math doesn't work. No one's going to knock something, I think the previous said, no one's going to knock something down, of course, half of it you can put back. It's not going to happen. So the borough has this ordinance in place, which is our site. Now, we've added the adjacent site to make our lot 21,000 square feet. And using the density that is in the ordinance, 13.5 units, let's say round up to 14, there's no limit on bedrooms either. So each of those townhomes could have three or four bedrooms. The bedroom count would then be 42 to 56 bedrooms, as a matter of right. Now, we're seeking 48 bedrooms, like right in the middle of that allowable, possible density. The livable space is limited to the building coverage, which does not include the garage space. It's exempted from the building coverage calculation. So 31,500 square feet is the math when you do 50% building coverage times 21,000 square foot lot is 10,500 feet on the ground and three floors. 10,000, 10, 31,500 square feet of building, not including garage, and not including basements, which also allow. Our proposal is approximately 32,000 square feet of building if you add up all the condos. So size-wise, the MF75 zone is very similar to what we are proposing. Bedroom count, size of units, height of building, setback from the sidelines. So that's as of right. And the number of units is a function of the feasibility of this project. So we can go through all the M7...
Just talk a while on that, just going to the overall height of 35 feet that is allowed at the MF75 zone?
Thirty-five feet is allowed.
And...
And if there was access to a rooftop deck, which is also allowed, you would have elevator, which is allowed, and an exemption for less than 10% of the building height. So you can have less than 10% area projecting above the 35 feet. Mary can tell you it's going to be at least 12 or 13 feet above the roof light level. So the actual physical top of a structure could be 47 feet, as a matter of right. And paraplegic walls can be around air conditioning units, as a matter of right. And those could be at five feet above the 35. So you can have utilities on the roof with a screen, which would be 40 feet from the ground, average height. And that's not a variance, that's as of right. So we're trying to compare what is in the books in Belmar, as a matter of right, to what we're asking for. And I don't see a significant difference in what's size setback, rear setback of 10 feet. We have greater than that in the back of our structure. And our building height is not tremendously different from what's already on the books. And again, only these four spots in the borough meet the criteria for the applicability of that MF75 zone, where one... So the R75, all the bulk criteria and all that, nice to know what it could have been, should have been. Our position, though, that the plan as it stands, the use variance for this site is the right plan, and that if the board was to so grant the use, all these bulks are subsumed with the use granting of these variances. We don't focus on a lot of coverage of a single-family home when you're talking about something totally different use. It's like apples and bananas, you don't compare the two. You hear the argument, well, what if you build three houses? What if you build two houses? Isn't that better to build one house? None of that applies here. This is, this application is for 20, 40 units because it fits, it barely meets, according to this expert, barely meets, you know, financial purposes. You're not making a ton of money here, according to the expert, but to remove the blight from the neighborhood. And if you live more than two blocks away, you go, what blight? There's no blight in Belmar. But if you live across the street... I have the report, which you want to answer to. Let's enter this book.
So this, what the experts are referring to is the binder that was presented as A8 So if you can describe what is contained in that, this was all provided to the board independently.
This binder...
So, Mr. Chair, I already put my, yeah, I put my objection on the record with regard to the admissibility of the binder from the town president.
All right, why don't you, that was at the last hearing.
Yes.
Why don't you repeat what your objections are?
Well, binder has, oh, sorry. Well, the binder has, from what I understand, it's got minutes or transcripts of prior meetings, if it's the binder that I reviewed. Minutes of prior meetings, it's got prior, minutes of prior meetings with respect to an application that was withdrawn or dismissed, never decided upon. I don't understand the relevance to that. And also...
Can he present it first, then you can...
Well, I read it. I read it. And so I see it. I know what's in, yeah, I'll go over that to you. And so it also has planning reports that were submitted in the context of another hearing for a different property that was an application that was withdrawn. I don't see the relevance, my objection stands. If there's, if there's going to be any reliance on any of the content of that binder, it needs to be testified to specifically. I don't know if all the board members who are here, or here at the prior meetings, there's a host of problems with the admissibility of a transcript for an application that was withdrawn. It just has no relevance, and my objection stands.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now I do want to have some legal argument. Do you want to talk about that, or you want to...
I think the, we have, should have an opportunity to identify what it is first.
Okay, but nobody marked it, right?
And what, yeah, and what it's being presented for.
Unless you're going to have to answer Mr. Brodsky's.
If it's proper, that's what you want.
Okay. So let's mark it, and I mean, have it identified, and then you'll address Mr. Brodsky's...
I will.
...evidentiary objection.
Exactly. So when I put together the plan, one of the things I reviewed was the borough's master plan. I reviewed the redevelopment, reexamination report, the state development and redevelopment And I also reviewed the document, which has information about the Belmar Inn, as far as it may be a prior application, which I prepared, and it may have been withdrawn. But the police reports, the first aid squad calls, the code enforcement violations are matters of record at the borough that I referred to to determine that the ongoing situation at the Belmar Inn is not going away, and that the violations continue. And this document, called the binder, has valuable information about what the Belmar Inn is. It has nothing to do with the old application. The Belmar Inn has a record through the borough's own information from the police and from the health department, the first aid squad, and code violation that is important to know about. And I read it, and historically, through March of 2021, the calls keep coming. And that's the document that I referenced.
And are those the types of documents that you, as a planner, would rely upon in giving the opinions that you're going to give tonight?
Exactly. It's part of my fact-finding opinion on why this Belmar Inn needs to go.
And is that going to be part of your... Is that going to be part of your planning analysis that the Belmar Inn has to go? Under the municipal land use law, if a building is removed, right, then the applicable zoning applies, there's no grandfathering, there's no pre-existing non-conforming conditions, either use or bulks, that remain once the building is torn down. A, B, would you also testify to the board as to whether there are any current outstanding violations that exist today as we're here? Three, are you going to be testifying as to the relevance of that to substantiate the host of variances that are required as part of this application? And lastly, what is the relevance of the transcripts that are contained in the binder from a prior application that was withdrawn? It's, if you, I've heard testimony already...
I've already answered your question.
I've asked four questions.
Well, why don't you answer one?
Okay. And then I'll give you the rest. I thought I would give them all to you.
First question was what?
First question?
Start over.
Are there any standing violations today?
I am unaware of violations today.
Second question. Are you going to use transcripts of a prior hearing that was withdrawn in support of your planning analysis, or as part of your planning analysis and opinions, in support of the host of variances that are associated both D and C with respect to this application?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so then I don't see any relevance to those. So if we can put that, if we can have that on the record, Mr. Kennedy, that should be removed, that shouldn't be considered by the board. The third question...
Oh, those two are next. Okay. So if you rephrase that question?
You answer it, all right.
The testimony of the town's code enforcement officers and fire department officers and police officers, I am relying on that testimony.
Okay, I think those officials have to come in and be subject to cross-examination if the witness is, and the applicant is going to rely on testimony from a prior hearing with respect to an application that was withdrawn. Doesn't make sense to me. But what I was also, what I was really asking you about were transcripts of prior hearings. I thought I saw that when I reviewed the file in the binder. Are you, do you intend, as a planner or an engineer, to rely on testament, on transcripts from a prior hearing with respect to a different property than exists today that was withdrawn and never decided upon?
What's a different property?
Well, it was one property, now it's two.
But it was the Belmar Inn.
It was the Belmar Inn, it was testimony given.
Still the Belmar Inn.
Still the Belmar Inn.
So what's different?
I thought, I thought there was a second parcel added to this property.
What was the Belmar Inn, which was the subject of the first application?
I don't know, I didn't read all of the transcripts of the prior testimony given in a different application. It doesn't matter if it was the same property, it's a different application that was withdrawn.
They related to the...
So if you want to rely, let me finish. If you want to rely on testimony that you gave a few years ago on a different application, you can't. You got to give that testimony here so we can ask you questions about it. I thought it's very simple. Mr. Kennedy, I don't think this is a unique question of the law.
All right, so Mr. Wlansky, you want to address Mr.?
I would be happy to.
Actually, could I just, before we even begin, could you just say this big thing is A8, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Just for the record, why don't you state what is in A8? And then we can have our debate.
Right, so the contents of this binder, what is it, A8?
A8, yes.
Yeah. It has A through O as a list of items that's in it. A is the rendering of the front and rear of the proposed structure. Forty-seven parking stalls on site.
And that's for this application?
I believe it is, yes. B is the initial five-story submission for 2018 of 24 parking stalls.
Irrelevant.
C is the...
All right, well, let's have him identify what it is.
Listening what's in it.
Oh, sorry.
C is the amended four-story structure for 2018 with 24 parking stalls. D is the existing aerial of the Belmar Inn and 108 12th Avenue, which is relevant. E is the existing non-conforming multi-family... E is the existing non-conforming multifamily lot. That's a, it's an exhibit, which is... That's A14, warranted evidence. Existing non-conforming multifamily lots on the borough's tax map. F is a decade of complaints to rid the Belmar Inn, addressed to the mayor and council, and there's minutes of the meetings from the borough's website. G is the first planning report that I did back in July of 2018. H is the survey and the tax card of the Belmar Inn, 112 to 114 12th Avenue. I is a survey of 108 and 108 and a half 12th Avenue, which is the East Lee Lot, part of this application. J is samples, are samples of fire, rescue, police, and code enforcement incidents, demands of the Belmar Inn from 2015 through 2021, and on the lot to the east, which is 108 and 108 and a half 12th Avenue, from 2019 to 2021. K is the applicant's request of the CDs of the three prior hearings of July 25th, July 26th, August 23rd, and 2018. L is photographs of 108 and 108 and a half 12th Avenue. And Mr. Ariel photo of the Belmar Inn, showing the non-conforming 2.7-foot setback to the west. Shows the Wesley home built almost on a property line. N is the aerial of 108 and 108 and a half 12th Avenue, showing a previous coverage and parking on the entire property, and three rental units depicted. O is 105 12th Avenue, 107 12th Avenue, 109 12th Avenue, 113 12th Avenue, Properties on West 109 12th Avenue, Inc.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that. What is up?
He's reading off the index sheet.
Okay. I don't know, I didn't, I'll find it. Just saying again, what, always?
So, the photograph under attachment or index O...
I think it's in the exhibit.
So, O in this binder is A17.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's a picture that describing what it was.
So, that's what the binder is.
Okay. So, Mr. Lonsky, I am sorry, I cut you off, and you were going to address your, your response to Mr. Brodsky's objections.
Yeah, I just want to ask, if I can, the information that's in this binder include, sorry. The information that's contained in that binder, that, that was put together by you for this presentation, although some of it was also used in a prior application that was withdrawn, is that the type of information that you would customarily use in determining whether or not the land use aspects of granting of variance, you know, the negative and positive criteria, would be met for this application?
Yes.
And, for example, the, are, is there anything in those, that list of items that you gave that you, that you would not rely upon in formulating your opinion?
No.
So, the argument, the argument is that, as an expert, he's entitled to do his research, he's entitled to rely upon public records, he's entitled to rely upon sworn testimony that he's aware of regarding those documents and regarding the facility, and this is the background for the testimony that he's going to provide. And certainly, the hearsay objections that, that are being raised do not apply when it comes to an expert relying upon customary things that are used by him to formulate his opinions.
And could I ask one question, sir? Just, the, the part of the exhibit that contained police reports and fire rescue reports, I think that was maybe letter J. From where did they come, from where were they originated? How did you get them?
It was from the Oprah request to the borough.
All right, so Oprah being the Open Public Records Act request. You or your agent submitted a request to the town for these documents. These were public records that were given to you?
Yes, it was request number 21-124. And it includes all 911 calls, police records, first aid responses. It was in March of 2021 was the request.
Okay, so, we have an objection. Mr. Brodsky, does the response that Mr. DeFalco gave and Mr. Lonsky gave, does that in any way obviate or negate any of your objections?
The answer is, I have no objection to discussing any of the items set forth in that, or included in that binder, that are being presented as part of this hearing. If there are items in that table of contents that are here as exhibits, then I have no problem with it. If there are items that pertain to the specific facts associated with the current application, I have no objection. But the confusion, there is confusion that results from this, because when I reviewed this file with the town, my table of contents that I copied only went through K. This is, now I'm hearing that it goes through additional letters, and I don't know, I'm not saying anyone did anything, but that's, that's one of the problems, and one of the reasons that testimony to be considered by a board is testimony that is given at a current hea, hearing, not that was given at prior hearings that were withdrawn. So, I have no objection to, my list only goes to K. I would object to items B, C, because these are, these are, seem to be exhibits from the prior application from 2018 that was withdrawn. So that would be B, C. F, a decade of complaints to rid Belmar of the Belmar Inn to the mayor and council, attached minutes of the meetings from the borough's website. I object to that. If there's testimony in that regard, someone should come in here and give that testimony, because I don't know if, if, what is included in that and what is not. G, I object to, the first planners' report by Mr. DeFalco dated July 25th, 2018, with respect to a, a prior application that was withdrawn. H, I have no problem. Survey, surveys don't change. I, survey of 108, I have no problem with. J, samples of fire, rescue, police, code enforcement incidents, demands of the Belmar Inn, and 108. We heard testimony, there are no outstanding violations. I don't know whose samples they are, and who created them, where they came from, what's included in samples, what's not. K are the, the CDs of the three prior hearings from July 25th, 2018, July 26th, 18, August 23rd, 2018. I object to that for the reasons I gave earlier, that is, testimony with respect to an application that was withdrawn. I don't know what the other contents are after K, because that was not in what I reviewed.
All right, and Mr. DeFalco said letter L was a photograph of property, M was a...
No objection.
...photograph. I think N was an aerial photograph, and O was a photograph that has been simultaneously or independently marked as A17.
So, no objections to those.
Okay. So, Chairman, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I was following the law. So, what, what letters are now objectioned?
All right, he wrote the, he said B, C, F, G, J, and K. Right, was that correct?
That's correct.
F, the, the, yeah, that's important. F is important in that it's the, what you're relying upon to give your opinion. It's, it's the response, the open public records requests of the township.
Okay.
I don't see any reason why that can't be part of what's relied upon in this hearing.
Okay. And what about G?
Yes. All right, so G, we can eliminate.
Okay.
Samples of the code enforcement, correct me if I'm wrong, these were the reports when you went through the hundreds of reports that you had that you felt were the most important and relevant to the testimony you had provided, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Which one was that, David? J.
J.
And then the next one was K, the request of the prior hearings.
So, with respect to the, the testimony that was provided on the prior hearings, the testimony of the municipal officials, I don't have a problem, I don't believe, redacting the other testimony, but that testimony is what you were relying upon in delivering your opinions regarding the condition of the property and code violations that previously existed, and may still exist.
Correct.
The CDs, just to clarify, were not in the file, so... I'm sorry? Right, I'm, I'm wondering how, how I can get them, and, and, I mean, I don't think that it's appropriate, but my objection stands, but if the board overrules me, I'd like to be able to access them.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have some comments, suggestions, if...
Yeah, I'm all ears.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, I think Mr. Lonsky may help you as far as your comments.
I would very much appreciate that.
We could certainly ask Mr. Sinelli, Mr. Puff, and I forgot who else is here.
Ryan DeLeah.
That's right. Mr. DeLeah, to come back in and provide the same testimony that you provided last time, which basically was a reiteration of what's in their reports that are attached. I think for those that were here last time, it took a significant amount of time because of the volume of the reports. And I don't think that putting everyone through those days of testimony, only to be used by our planner, to the extent that they were the basis for his opinion, which an expert is allowed to rely upon, public records and other documents, that it's necessary at this point to do that. But if that's what the board wants, we'll do that. I don't see any real advantage to bringing all of these experts in to go through their hundreds of pages of reports that they had previously identified and put on the record, and which were also supplied through an open public records act request.
And I guess, as I understand it, Mr. Brodsky, you're not objecting to the actual reports or the open responses, it would just be the testimony of these gentlemen that completed these reports or, I guess, have given that information?
That's correct.
Is the testimony then important to your opinion?
This was their sworn testimony about their reports and their observations, which were being relied upon by our expert.
The testimony or the report? I mean, I feel like we're talking about dispossessions here.
Same, same.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, please. But I, so again, this is a big topic with a lot of subparts, so, and I'm glad, just that little exercise, thank you to the council, because I think we eliminated much of the source of, of the problem. So, here's the thing, just for the record, I do think the, the transcripts from the prior hearings, that's maybe not relevant per se in terms of this application. It is the same property, but it is a different application, different proposal, different properties. And, as everyone pointed out, some board members who are on the board then might not even have been there that, that night when we had those prior hearings. Obviously, there's some new board members who weren't necessarily there. It's addition, a different application, additional property was, was acquired, and respectfully, in the absence of extraordinary circumstances, I don't think the transcripts of the prior hearings are, you know, on a different application which was dismissed without prejudice, I would probably be concerned about relying on that. Now, the difference, we have earlier gave a shout-out to the board member, Dean, for listening to the transcript, the transcript of this process, this application, is totally relevant, and others can, can rely on it. And also, again, we also, when we talk about evidence, formal rules of court don't apply here, but the basic ones do, hearsay, relevance, and all those things. So, a couple of things. With regard to the, the records, and I think everyone, okay, I would respectfully suggest that those are okay, they're, they're a business record exception to the hearsay rule. They were documents that were obtained from, from the borough. I think they're relevant, or I think they're at least, you know, okay to rely on in terms of, some of you might be very moved by them, some of you might not be moved by them at all, some of them might think it's helpful, some might not think it's helpful at all. So you attribute what weight it is that you want to attribute to it. But I do think, since it is a business record of the town, it was obtained under the Open Public Records Act, I don't have a problem with the board having that. Respectfully, I would have an issue, or I can see how a reviewing court could have an issue with relying on the testimony that was presented by, by the prior construction officials. Someone could argue that you all didn't get to question him or her, and the public who were here tonight didn't get to question him. And Mr. Brodsky is certainly going to say, well, I wasn't here for that first application, so I don't, I didn't get to hear that. So I would respectfully submit that we can't rely on the testimony in terms of that was presented in the prior hearing. And I said, with all due respect, I don't want to take a lot of time, but I think the records are fine, I think the, the prior minutes are fine as a business record, and I think, so the only issues were, as I understand them, the decades of minutes, which, that's public record, so it is what it is, I have no objection to that. And the sample of the fire and police and rescue reports, a business record, I have no objection to, to that being marked in the record. And the testimony from the prior officials, I would respectfully, I can see how a court could have a problem with that. So I think that appears to be the only issue, Mr. Brodsky, about the, I mean, you're still opposed to the records, and...
No, I was okay with the records, it was the testimony.
Okay.
It was the testimony and the prior transcripts and the other items.
Okay.
And, you know, I, my question is, you know, how do, how do we cure this? I mean, you know, I'm not a fancy trial attorney like Mr. Shiper, so I'm just local yokel land use attorney. So I'm trying to figure out, how do we take things out of a binder that's already been submitted and marked as evidence, and ensure that it not be included on the record in the, in the event that this could be a futile?
Well, want to speak first?
Yes. I appreciate the comments. I'm kind of humbled in the way of Mr. Brodsky, but very simple cure. We lay the foundation, and we all know the evidence rules about foundation, or at least I do, and I suspect Mr. Brodsky does, based a little point. Mr. Kennedy, due respect to your position to the board, you said you don't want Mr. DeFalco to rely upon for your... DiFalcone to rely upon for your considering prior hearsay, non-cross-examining in this proceeding estimate. So it's simple, we will abide by your suggestion. I suggest to Mr. Lonsky, we finish the engineering portion of Mr. DiFalcone, we cure Mr. Brodsky's objection, we'll bring Mr. Puff, we'll bring Mr. DeLeh, we'll bring Mr. Sinelli, we'll go round two with all those guys, we'll make our record, Mr. Brodsky can pause until the cows come home, and then we'll move on with planning for Mr. DiFalcone, and I suspect Mr. Stack, you can try to wrap this up in the next hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Shiper, then I would just add to Mr. Brodsky's point, the cure, it's an easy cure. We marked it, when we marked it at the first hearing as A8, we marked it for our introduction and identification purposes only, because we knew we were going to have this discussion. So I don't think we need to do anything other than we just know, we recognize what we just said, and I think that's the cure, and then the further cure is the testimony from the witnesses that Mr. Shiper agreed to, and we thank you for that, and I think we'll move on.
All right, I will take that recommendation, unless anybody on the board objects. All right, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Lonsky?
Yeah, so at this point, I'm just, I know we have to share the mics, but at this point, I'm just going to ask you, I'm going to get this in a second.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just going to ask you to proceed with the engineering testimony, and we'll come back to the, some of the planning testimony.
Very good, alright, so nine sheets of plans. The arrow view we looked at last time shows the location of the property relative to the neighborhood. It's a recent photograph of 2021. A11 depicts the site on October 13 on 12th Avenue, 50 feet from A Street to the east. The existing properties in the arrow photograph identifies proximity of adjacent homes. The tax map, which is on the cover sheet, depicts the lot sizes of those adjacent lots. At the last meeting was a comment by one of the board members about...
Can you identify the...
Yeah, A29, which is a marked up copy of Sheet 4 of 9, which is the site plan sheet, which shows a rerouting of traffic flow. The original plan had a two-way aisle, two-way driveway on the site, two two-way driveways. We revised that at the recommendation of the board member to have exit to the west, entrance to the east. We're also proposing to narrow the width of the paved driveway from the curb to the building to reflect the one-way flow. This plan shows counterclockwise flow of traffic through the U-shaped parking aisle under the building. That's one issue. Second thing was, it was a comment about headlight glare on the neighbors. On the site plan, it shows a six-foot solid fence on the east, the north, and the west property line from the ground, six feet up, which will block the headlight from any neighboring property. The solid fence, not a chailing fence.
There was also some comments last time about the size of the parking stalls, do you want to address the size of the parking stalls?
Yeah, so with regard to site plan standards, we use several variances from, or waivers from the design standards. One is the width of a parking stall, which in the borough is nine feet. We do have some nine-foot stalls, but primarily because of the columns that are supporting the building, we typically have eight and a half foot wide stalls. We've done it before in Belmar, and the reasons for that is that this is not a high turnover like a shopping center like the Belmar Plaza would be, where you're in and out for five minutes, you move around, these people, they come, they're pretty much there most of the day, not a lot of in and out traffic. And once you are assigned a space, you get to know how to get in, how to get out pretty easily, which was also testified to by the traffic engineer at the last hearing. That's one of the waivers. The second one is that we have areas of the site where to eliminate excess impervious area, that last two feet at the front of a parking space is always a waste of two feet of blacktop, because the wheels only go so far, and the rest of it is just impervious coverage. So in instances where we are open to the sky, not under the building, we're proposing a 16-foot paved area, which is where the wheels can travel, and the bump will overhang two feet onto the grass or landscaped area to eliminate excess impervious area. The RSIS envisioned that type of an approach, and this is in accordance with their standards to reduce pavement, yet keep an 18-foot stall length, but not pave 18 feet. That's another variance that we were waiver arresting for. And the third is the width of the aisle. We have a 22-foot aisle at the back of the north end of the site, and I feel that it's adequate to get in, seeing it's a one-way aisle, plenty of maneuver room, slow vehicle speeds, and people that know basically where they're going, the residents of the building. So I think those are the parking dimensional variances that we're looking for. We do have two handicap spaces, which is code for this number of units, they're located adjacent to an access aisle, closest to the door, which is closest to the elevator for access to the building. So two handicaps are provided. And in the street, we have two on-street parking spaces provided, not part of the 47 onsite, but there are two spaces in the street. With regard to the number of spaces, RSIS says two per unit for this type of development. So 24 times two is 48, and the RSIS also says that in that number of 48, it accounts for one-half space for guest parking, which shall be either the onsite or in the general area. So we're short one space, by code, not one space anywhere on any street within 300 or 300 feet is an acceptable place for that person to park, still meet the code. So the three months of the year when this is very busy during this time, and ending in Labor Day, after that, you can pretty much park anywhere you want, it's not like it is today. So that one slight variance in the traffic engine rule to testify, we have 1.96 spaces per unit where two is required, so I think we're splitting hairs on that. I think with enough parking onsite, and that one person that technically is not counted onsite, you can find a spot somewhere and still be a guest and visit the site. The site has a lighting plan, which is in the ceiling of the building at the parking deck, LED lights that shine straight down, there's no spillage outside of the property line, there's no sky glow, everything is contained within the site, and between the downlights and the fencing that's on the perimeter, there's no spillage off the site, zero-foot candles at the property line, no spillage. There are doors on the garage, entrances and exits, which will be closed for security purposes, and opened, I guess they'll have a key fob or something. It's proposed to put paver sidewalk across the site frontage, and paver driveways, and paver walkways to the main entranceway. The fire exits which come from the stairwells are also paver walkways on the east and west side of the building from the two stair exits. The drainage system is proposed to collect all the roof water and control the water quality storm, and also the two, and most of the 10-year storm onsite with basically no discharge. The 100-year storm, there's a discharge proposed at the easternly end of the property, and it'll flow from an inlet into the gutter. The flow is less than what's there today if you did a comparison of the pavement, of what's there today, impervious versus what's proposed on flow, with less flow leaving the site after development than there is today in its present state, if you compare the same amount of rain, so there's a reduction in that. We have a landscape plan, which is...
Do you want to address the design basis for having a parking below the video? So I asked Mr. DiFalcone before we left, the parking area, a question as to why he designed this project with the parking at street level and the residential units above it, so that's what his response was at this point. And part of his response involves a video that he watched that showed some of the impacts of Sandy, and some of the impacts of water from the ocean and sea level is rising that impacted that decision. I don't know, it's on, it should be on screen.
Are we going to mark this video as a speaker?
I think yes, is the answer.
All right, so, we have... All right, so this is going to be, going to be A32?
That's my car.
All right, and so, A32, this is a video prepared by whom?
Segments of news coverage.
Yeah, news coverage segments.
All right, new coverage segments, and just who compiled it all?
It was both myself and Mr. Lonsky's office.
Okay. And Lonsky, and Mr. DiFalcone, and at the risk of asking an annoying question, is there a recording of this that we'll have, or you can get to us, we can keep on the public record?
I believe it was on the thumb drive, I think.
I know, there's one we have here on this one.
Okay, you can submit it, perfect.
We can leave.
Thank you.
With the chief.
I got that.
The worst is open fire, open fire in their barbecue grill, they threw the lid on it with a fire cut.
That's 12th Avenue, or sand washed over from this way.
This, this right here, the street was out there. So, two fires? This was, that was on the byway. So this was a road? And this is still in Belmar? Oh, obviously, okay. Good grief! Holy crap!
That's the FEMA representative talking, please.
So what do you think, then, it's day one?
Yeah, first time I've been in Belmar.
I didn't see this.
I don't believe it. This is like Pensacola, Florida damage type stuff, Elville, Hugo, you know, big hurricanes, Gulf Coast, this is in New Jersey. And this is the road under here?
Yep.
You can see the Belmar in, just above the white jacketed man.
Sucks. The boardwalk there, there. The boardwalk went that way.
Break them ways. Yeah, break them ways. One last short.
I'm having problems following the relevance of this, we're showing the properties that are in the flood zone that got flooded after Sandy, the subject property, my client property, not in the flood zone, so if we could just explain what the relevance is, it might be a little helpful.
Well, the relevance is that no one can predict the next hurricane, and they're going to have a new flood map for that one, so you say it's not in the flood zone, it's not if you're in a flood zone, it's when you're in a flood zone.
Okay, so the purpose of submitting this is to show that other properties have flooded, and maybe one day the subject property will flood?
It's proper designed to anticipate a flood, not to ignore a flood.
Designed and purpose with respect to what? Locating the parking deck at the ground level?
Locating the structure above the flood elevation, yes, the residence.
And so, which, you mean locating the residence above the flood? All right, then I'll object to the, I'll object to the admission of these videos, I'm trying to, I'm trying to...
Lay a foundation. Lay a foundation.
Yeah, what's the foundation?
Let's do it how you're supposed to. Good, you see, you raise the foundation, Mr. Kennedy will make a room, you two argue. Perfect, there we go.
Any more videos?
No.
No more videos. But the purpose of the video was just to remind everybody how one storm can change all the maps that are on record, and we have to be aware that through the uncertainty of these types of storms and the frequency of storms, it's not unlikely that there will be a bigger storm than Sandy, and it'll impact Belmar worse, so if we ignore it...
You continue testifying to explain what, so I was already withdrew the objection. I'm not objecting to the potential.
Okay, then it's over.
I sat down, he made me get up.
All right, so we've got the video not show flooding on the subject property. Mr. Lonsky, you're going to continue with?
Yes, please proceed. Well, proceed. So I was saying there's a, where was the landscaping plan? Every color.
It's there.
It's behind you. Too many boards. All right, we also prepared a landscaping plan of the property in the front building. Yes, it's A28. That was marked into evidence. It's my sheet seven of nine, which is colorized by Mary Hearn.
Because that's my job.
So relative to the parking, what it shows is there's going to be a concrete driveway, aisle and parking stalls under the main building, concrete. And at the perimeter, there's going to be, there'll be impervious pavers around the perimeter and also outside of the building. Any rain that hits the impervious pavers goes right into the soil and into the drain system. So the size of the building, because this is an open sided building, you've got about an eight foot, nine foot under clearance so that driving rain can blow at an angle. Any rain that comes in from any direction will hit the impervious part of this and soak into the ground before it gets to the concrete, which is also sloped to come out, but that should stay primarily dry because the outside perimeter will not let the water go past it. We have underground piping, storage, I said before, but in front we have landscaped beds and trees, shrubs along the backs and the corners by the parking areas. And that's all detailed on the landscaping plan. The right away area between the curb and sidewalk remains as a lawn area. The pink area on this map is the building footprint at the ground level, stairwell, trash enclosure, stairwell, the lobby, elevator and the mechanical room. So we talked about drainage, landscaping, lighting, parking waivers. Let me look at the letter from the Vakian's office real quick. I think I said that all roof leaders will be connected to the infiltration system. Jerry, was there anything that I did not pick up on?
No, you picked up on everything in our letter. I would like to just take you back real quick to the parking layout one more time.
Okay.
With the waivers.
All right.
And I recognize that you're looking for minimal differences from the standard nine by eighteen parking space.
Yes.
But just doesn't afford understanding. The one-way traffic flow is much, is much more conducive now to the way that parking is set up. This is just a little bit longer. With two-way, too much potential, it's too crowded and a case from part of Republicans. So in my opinion, this is a much better plan. But if you could just explain to the board, some of your spaces are eighteen feet wide of all.
Yes, some of them are nine by eighteen.
Can you just take them around, around the wall and show which helps and which doesn't help? That's all.
All right, sure. So the center of the building has the lobby and vestibule elevator core in the middle and is a solid wall on that occupied space. All the spaces that head into that wall are eighteen feet deep since there's no overhang there. There will be concrete pavement eighteen feet deep, so these are not asking for any depth variance or waiver. Around the perimeter, however, where we extend to the building footprint is about two-thirds covering the car. About one-third of the car is outside of the building above you. So the bumper is outside of the building subject to the rainfall. We're cutting back the size of the space from eighteen to sixteen, yet leaving two feet of overhang for the car to protrude so the car still sits where it would sit, but the front of it is not blacktop, it's landscaped, if you understand that. That's around the perimeter of the site. Up against the sidewalk in the back, we have sixteen and a half feet of space and we have a six and a half foot sidewalk to account for two foot of overhang, actually eighteen inches of overhang is what we need, leaving a five foot pedestrian way. So even in the back here, we have a widened out sidewalk area to allow for overhang on the vehicle. We still have adequate space to walk. Does that answer Jerry's question?
Yeah, and the other point is all the spaces are eight and a half feet wide instead of nine. And as you know, that is more commonly the parking garage where the car is not moving in and out. Strictly assigned space and therefore the way the request is normally drafted for that purpose.
Thank you.
I think it's engineering wise that. Rooftops, okay, there's a different room on that. All right, so A25 shows the rooftop, shows the solar panels oriented to the north. It shows the air conditioning units centrally located. Looks like even the number on either side of the main corridor. I think there was a question from one of the public about noise, was it the board member?
It was the board member.
Board member, I'm sorry. So there will be screen, which is soundproof material and you might think that if you have one air conditioner, it's this noisy, if two, it's twice as noisy. That's not the way it works. It's exponential, it doesn't go like one times one, one plus one, it's, it's not a direct increase. So while there's more than a few units here and we know that we're going to be sitting next to them, we don't want it to be noisy, so there'll be a screen, which is soundproof material, directs sound upwards, not towards people sitting on the roof and definitely not towards the ground, which is forty-one and a half feet away. So we did take that to account. And there's a wall with, it's like a membrane. They put it in, oh, the same thing in movie theaters you go see. It's a cinema wall with soundproofing on it. You don't hear everything, sometimes you hear the big noise, but you don't hear everything. And then there was a question about the 10%. This is less than 10% of the roof coverage what's proposed here. You can look at it, if that's the roof, that's not more than 10%. Graphic shows the size of it. That was it. That's what I have for engineering and next time we come back, we'll do the rest.
That's it for the engineering test line.
Yeah, just, just before we move on, as far as engineering, when you go over the zoning criteria, is that going to be under planning, especially this table?
Yes.
That's all under planning?
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, so then I guess we would go to Mrs. Lonsky for cross on engineering. You know what, and we'll also note it's ten o'clock. We're trying to wrap up between 10 and 10:30, so we'll look for a natural break here by 10:30 at some point. I think it's, I think it's a good time for you to go with your cross.
That's great, thank you. Okay, Mr. DeFaco, why don't we, why don't we start with the roof deck for the moment? Just while it's fresh in my mind. Oh, sorry. Yeah, what I said was if we could start with the roof deck while it's fresh in my mind. Couple of things. One is you talked about the 10% coverage provision of the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, that was raised by, by someone I answered the question.
Yeah, so my question is, so that's, so that's section forty colon seven point twelve C1. Now, the same, and forty colon seven point twelve C1 says such features, talks about occurrences and, and you know, stair towers and elevator towers, HVAC equipment and all that. And it says such features may, subject to the limitations of this section, exceed the height limitations of this chapter if they do not exceed in aggregate coverage 10% of the roof area. That's what you were referring to?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what about forty colon seven point twelve C3? And which says that in the R75 zone, roof occurrences may exceed height limitations by five feet. So is your testimony, is your testimony that the provision I just referenced forty colon seven point twelve C3, is your testimony that that, is your testimony that that does not apply?
Say it again.
Forty colon seven point twelve C3. Which puts a five foot limitation on the height of roof occurrences. You didn't mention that.
Well, getting back into kind of the planning end of it where the bulk standards of the R75 will not be applicable for the use that we're proposing. We're not comparing a single family criteria to the proposed use, so I don't think we want to go down that road. Same thing with.
I'm sure you don't want to go down that road. But I'm heading down that road because.
Step backs and heights and things like that.
Irrelevant.
Pertaining to the R75 are irrelevant.
Irrelevant. So why are they in the notice?
That's the zone we're in.
Okay, they're in the zone, they're in the zone, but they're irrelevant. And if you go for a use variance, seeking a use that's not permitted in the zone, the bulk requirements in that zone are irrelevant. That's your testimony, that's your planning testimony.
We'll get there next time.
We'll get there next time. Okay, I just wanted to mention. So what's bulk variances though, what bulk requirements would, would apply? Bulk, I'm sorry. What bulk requirements in the, would you apply in analyzing the application if you don't use the bulk requirements in the zoning ordinance that pertains to this, to this R75 zone?
Under planning.
Okay. I can't wait to hear the answer. So let's get back now to the, to the drive-by, the, the traffic, oh, no, I'm sorry.
We had the roof or we had the traffic?
I'm going to stay on the roof. It's relevant. So can you tell me how far the amenity deck is from the rear property line?
Is that in your scale?
I.e. my client's property.
Right there. What's the engineer's scale?
Well, you need a property back seat?
Yeah. Forty feet, looks like, forty feet?
Forty feet from the rear property line?
I believe so. Eight scale. Forty feet.
Okay. And so, so my client's property is not shown on there obviously, but it's, you know, up top to the rear. Yeah. And is it your testimony, well, let's step back. How many people can congregate on the amenity deck?
That's a code issue, I don't have answers for that.
Well, how many do you show? How many lounges do you show? How many tables and chairs do you show? How many other areas do you show?
There's 20 seating on each side, so 40 seats and then there's some tables.
Yeah, is that, are those, I can't see from here, I'm getting old. The bottom left, the tables, those are all tables, three, five, eight tables. How many chairs are around there? I can't see.
Four each.
Four, so that's another 32. What number did you have? What were you up to?
It's a 20 seats and 20.
20 seats and now we're up to another eight times with 32. What's on the right southerly corner?
Another seating area.
Right. Okay, thanks. And how many seats would be in the seating area?
Eight is probably two or three people per seat.
Okay, okay. Getting late. Did we get, what did we get up to, 60?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. I'll take it. So 72.
All right, and just that was an answer from somebody in the audience. Is, is, is that the number, Rich?
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I want, I want the answer to come from you.
Catch the seats and seat it. One's tables, one's lounge chairs, one's a couch.
Okay, great. And so if, if no one's standing and everyone's seated, we have 72. And so, and is it your testimony that there'll be no noise that emanates from this rooftop deck?
No unusual noise in a residential area.
I don't know how you're finding unusual.
What is noise in your residential area?
Well, if it's.
Somebody talking is the noise?
Let's talk about a permitted use. Would you have, would you have 72 people on the roof of a, of a single family residential home on a regular basis?
Bill does.
No, but if you have 14.
Now, Bill's quiet.
If you have 14 townhouses, you could have four people here and four people there and have 72 people on the property.
That's interesting. We're good with townhouses, but I'm talking about any noise that's going to spill out from this rooftop amenity deck that's 40 feet from my client's property line.
As I mentioned before, we could have a 10-foot setback to a three-story townhouse and have a roof deck and have people on that roof deck and have one right next to it and have one right next to it and have one next to it. And have balconies at the third floor. Why code without variance? So you're not comparing apples and oranges here.
So I assume because you're straining not to answer the question, the question, the answer is yes, there will noise that will come off. I'm not, I don't care about what's anything.
Objectionable noise unless you think people talking is objectionable and somebody playing a radio is objectionable, which anybody can do in Belmar. So if that's objectionable, your answer is yes.
Well, that's interesting. I didn't ask about objectionable. I asked if there's any noise that's going, because you, you went to great pains to talk about your soundproof, soundproofing of the. know, up top to the rear. Yeah. And is it your testimony, well, let's step back. How many people can congregate on the amenity deck?
That's a code issue. I don't know how many.
Well, how many do you show? How many lounges do you show? How many tables and chairs do you show? How many other areas do you show?
There's 20 seating on each side, so 40 seats, and then there's some tables.
Yeah, is that, are those, I can't see from here, I'm getting hold. The bottom left, the tables, those are all tables, three, five, eight tables. How many chairs are around there? I can't see.
Four each.
Four, so that's another 32. What number did you have? What were you up to?
So, 20 seats and 20...
20 seats, and now we're up to another eight times one, 32. What's on the right southerly corner?
Another seating area.
Okay, thanks. And how many seats would be in the seating area?
Eight is probably two or three people per seat.
Okay, okay. It's getting late. Did we get, what did we get up to, 60?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. I'll take it. So, 72...
That was an answer from somebody in the audience. Is that the number, Rich?
Yeah, I mean...
Okay, I just want to make sure. I wanted to answer to come from you.
If you touch the seats and seating, one's tables, one's lounge chairs, one's a cabin.
Okay, great. And so, if no one's standing and everyone's seated, we have 72. And so, and is it your testimony that there'll be no noise that emanates from this rooftop deck?
No unusual noise in a residential area.
I don't know how you're defining unusual.
What is noise in your estimate?
Well, if it's...
Somebody talking is a noise?
Let's talk about a permitted use. Would you have, would you have 72 people on the roof of a, of a single-family residential home on a regular basis?
Build house.
No, but if you have 14 houses...
The build's quiet.
If you have 14 townhouses, you could have four people here and four people there and have 72 people on the property.
That's interesting. We're good with townhouses, but I'm talking about any noise that's going to spill out from this rooftop amenity deck that's 40 feet from my client's property line.
As I mentioned before, we could have a 10-foot setback to a three-story townhouse and have a roof deck, and have people on that roof deck, and have one right next to it, and have one right next to it, and have one next to it, and have balconies at the third floor. Why code without variance? So, you're not comparing apples and oranges here.
So, I assume, because you're straining not to answer the question, the question, the answer is yes, there will noise that will come off. I'm not, I don't care about what's anything, excuse me.
Objectionable noise unless you think people talking is objectionable, and somebody playing a radio is objectionable, which anybody can do in Baltimore. So, if that's objectionable, your answer is yes.
Well, that's interesting. I didn't ask about objectionable. I asked if there's any noise that's going, because you, you went to great pains to talk about your soundproof, soundproofing of the mechanicals, and I didn't hear anything about soundproofing from the residents and guests who are going to be congregating on the roof deck at a height that's already in excess of that which is permitted in the zone and requires a de-variance. Is there noise that's going to come off the roof if there are 72 people, or if there are 25 people?
If there's one person in the shelves, there's going to be noise, yeah.
Okay. But in your opinion, you don't think it's anything that would be in excess of what's permitted in the zone, i.e. a single-family residential?
Correct.
Great. Okay. Now, if I ask you also, let's go to the parking a little bit, okay? So, from the last meeting, you had two-way, two-way traffic in the aisle. What's the width of the aisle?
24 feet, except for 22 at the rear.
Okay. And what's required in the zone?
Not the zone, it's the state code, 24 feet.
What's required by the state code, 24 feet? So, you comply with it, except for some areas?
Except for the decks.
Some you do, some you don't.
Mostly do, some...
So, so, so if someone is pulling out of a parking space in the area that has a 22-foot drive aisle, how does that work?
It works like when you pull out a Jenkins and it's in a 16-foot wide. Same way. Take your time, you don't hit anybody.
So, you got to be careful. Okay. Let me ask you this. Are the spaces nested? Nested. You, last time, the traffic engineer, I asked if, if a condominium unit owner is entitled to a designated space. The traffic engineer said, I think he said that hadn't been decided yet. I thought you testified that, that it has been decided. Maybe I'm wrong. Does each condominium unit get a space?
For sure.
Okay. One space?
At least.
And is it, at least?
Now, Rich, I mean, would you go closer to the mic? I just want to make sure.
I'm sorry.
So, if it's at least...
My testimony is that each unit will definitely have a parking space. Yes, of course.
And it will have a specific designated parking space?
Yes.
That's the testimony?
I believe so.
Well, you're testifying.
My testimony. I believe they're going to have a designated spot.
One.
When I go home, my parking space, 22 every year.
Great, okay.
I know where to go.
Excellent. And so, we have 24, 24 units. That's 24 spaces. We've got 47 spaces. What's done with the balance of this space?
Right.
What have, what is the utilization plan for the balance, all this exit, all of the excess parking spaces?
Well, when they develop that ratio of one and a half per unit for residents, somebody with a higher degree than me came up with that number.
I'm not asking about the derivation of the state...
I'm just going to answer your question.
Okay, well, maybe I was unclear. Let me ask you again.
They're not getting two each or one each.
All right, but this is fun, but we got it. Rick asked a question, and then Mr. Brodsky...
My question is, my question is, does each condominium unit owner have a specific designated space? Your answer was yes.
Yes.
At least one. I'm asking, I don't understand what that means. Do some have two?
No. Some have three.
Some have three.
So, each have one, and the rest of it is going to be?
For visitors.
No. Visitors are half a unit. So, you're going to get 12 for visitor use.
So, in, are these space, I'm trying to figure out if there's a specific space designated as part of the deed, as part of the contract, somewhere that says, I own unit three, and here is my parking space?
I believe it'd be one space designated for every unit.
Okay. And it will be a specific space designated for that unit?
Yes.
So, when the owner of that space is not home, that space is empty and can't be used by anyone else?
I believe that's how it should work. So, when they come home, they can go park in their space.
That's how it is working for this? I'm just, I'm not trying to trick you. I'm just trying to understand how it's going to work, because last time, we, we heard it wasn't decided. And so, it sounds like it may have been decided since then.
I think they're going to have their space with a number on it that they go to, yes.
Okay. And if a condominium unit wants a second space, how does it work, if you know? Do they pay extra?
I don't know. I'm sure they'll pay extra, for sure.
For, for a second designated space. And is there a limit as to how many spaces a condominium unit can, owner can have, sold exclusively?
Probably one.
All right, maybe by next time, you'll, you'll be able to tell us exactly how it's going to work, because I think it's important, you're asking for a variance here, because you don't require...
No, we're asking for a variance for resident parking. We're asking for a variance for guest parking.
You're asking for...
Guest parking, I said. Park anywhere in the three-block range and still be code. So, yes, the ordinance requires 48 spaces. You're proposing 47. Yeah, I'm understanding. One and a half is for residents, half is for a guest. Guests can park in the street. So, the half that were, half a spot for guests is one spot missing. It's a guest spot, not a resident spot. I'm asking for a resident to park in the street. A guest who comes will park in the street.
You may not be understanding. I'm asking you, is there a variance being requested as set forth in the notice for having a deficient parking space?
A guest space, yes.
Oh, I didn't realize. The ordinance distinguishes?
The state code does.
Okay, but the Belmont ordinance does not.
The ordinance requires this is the state code.
Right. And so, is the standard of proof for a guest space variance different from the standard of proof required under the municipal land use law for a bulk variance for having, providing less than the required number of parking spaces?
I believe it is because the street is a variable that you can't calculate.
There's a different standard for a visitor's...
Parking on the street for one space is hard to calculate. Where is that space available?
I'm asking for, I'm talking about onsite parking.
Is it on A?
Talking about onsite...
I explained before that guest parking can be onsite or in the street.
So, you don't need a variance?
I didn't say you don't need a variance.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, the space can be available on the street. Where it is and when it's available is unknown.
And is, is that why you need a variance?
That's why we need a variance.
Okay. If you reduce the number of units, would you need a parking variance?
We'd get smaller cars.
I'm sorry?
We'll have smaller cars.
Oh, you could...
Smaller cars.
Condition of the approval. What's an...
I'm saying the units. Ask that quick. Whenever you reduce the units. Next question.
Well, I'll, I'll ask the questions. Get comfortable, because it's going to take a while. Because if you're not answering me, I'm going to keep asking the question.
Well, we're ending soon, so you better hurry.
I'm hurrying. They'll be back. They'll be back. I can't get a straight answer as to whether there's a variance. Yes, is there a variance for parking or requiring that?
All right, you know what, there's too many people talking, so they're going to ask a question anyway. And then Rick is going to, Rick is going to answer it if we can.
Yes, there is a parking, your, your, the application is requesting a parking variance.
Correct.
And I didn't ask you if you're reducing the units. Clearly, you're not.
Actually, you did.
No, I asked...
You said, if I reduce the units, would I need a variance?
I asked, yes.
And I said, when I reduce the units. So, you did ask me.
Uh, that's not the question I asked. I asked hypothetically, if you reduce the number of units, would you require less parking spaces? You don't have to answer that. I think we know the answer. I don't know why you don't want to answer that.
So, let's strike this question.
I'm striking it only because he's going back and...
It's a speaking objection or testimony. This is silliness. I've sat here and let Mr. Brodsky, with respect, ramble with testimony. We need some proper structure for his question.
All I ask is an answer to my question.
Well, to say a simple, one question at a time.
I thought that was a given. Do we need a variance?
Well, that's what you think, but that's not what you're...
Mr. Chairman, the answer, the question was withdrawn. Do you have another question, Rick?
I do. I have a number of questions. The number of spaces that are onsite now are how many?
About six, give or take.
Okay, give or take.
There's no spaces marked. It's whatever you fit.
Understood. So, do you have any concern with adding 47 spaces onsite vis a vis adjacent neighbors such as my client who are on the adjacent property?
Not at all.
No. They should be happy that they're now going to have 47.
We don't have to editorialize. He gave you an answer. You asked a question, he gave you an answer.
Okay, what about, actually, that goes to my question. How about fumes that are associated with the cars? Any concerns with that?
No.
Okay. Is that because you don't live there, or because you think that is... What happens to the fumes?
The fumes?
Yes.
What fumes? Will the cars park? There's no fumes.
Well, unless they're being brought in by airlift, they have to drive there, right?
Right, but they go there to park and turn off the car.
How about before the market, you're, this is why you're yelling at me about questions? I'm trying to get an answer.
I'm trying to get an understanding as to what, what fumes you're talking about. You mean if somebody idles for 12 hours, there'll be fumes?
No, I assume, tell me if I'm wrong, that cars have to drive into the parking lot before they park and turn the car off.
Right, they have to drive them over the street, which is 100 feet away.
Right.
Whatever fumes are on the street are on the lot.
So, so as an engineer, you're not concerned with fumes generated by onsite parking of 47 cars as they pertain to immediately adjacent residential property owners?
No.
Great. You talked about the lighting. Does the lighting stay on all night?
I believe there'll be a level of lighting that will be on all night.
And who would I ask that would be sure of that?
It may.
Okay.
I believe it'll be on all night.
Okay. Do we need to come back to that to confirm, if you don't understand my answer?
Hey, guys.
Will they be on all night?
Yes, I agree with the chairman.
Mr. Brodsky, how many more questions do you have to see?
Let me just ask a few questions, if I could, on the drainage. So...
Mr. Brodsky, about how many questions do you have? I'm trying to get a gauge. We still have some business to wrap up, and we can always come back if it's...
We can come back.
If it is acceptable to all the parties, I would like to say...
I'm honored by respect of the board.
I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Lonsky, do you have any objections to the order? Mr. Kennedy?
All right, April, what are we looking at?
Well, we have the September 23 meeting. I have two applications that I know of that I've noticed already for that meeting. One of, there's a third application I have penciled in, which is Mr. Schreiber's application for, so I'm not sure if that one's confirmed or not. And then, for our special meeting on September 29th, I also had three applications. I've heard, I've given that date to, one of them is also Mr. Schreiber's application, but the other two are anxious to move forward, so they've already started preparing their notices. So, I don't know if anyone sees. The other meeting would be October 28th.
I would propose that we take the October 28th meeting for the next, for the, for the next hearing, this application.
We can possibly do a special one then.
We have two next week. You're asking for a special in October. We have...
Well, earlier in the month, maybe. Probably about 10 months from now.
We'll have one, we'll most likely have a special meeting in October. We are probably not going to know what that date is tonight, and for, for notice purposes, obviously, we wouldn't pick the date tonight. So, I'm offering the regular meeting in October, where the date is already set.
We don't have an objection for re-notice for if you do something on, say, the first week of October, and you get a set date by incident, there's no problem re-noticing I'll tell it to the board, unless trying to take it, what does it have a part?
I know there's a lot of things that go into picking the date. For whatever reason, I feel like our special meetings are always towards the third and fourth meeting of the month. I don't know if that's based on our schedules.
It depends on the calendar, where our meeting falls. But since our meeting is late, 28th, I would defer it kind of the schedule. We have to look and see when we go more or less, when we...
So, we could do two things. Number one, I mean, are you asking that we adjourn to the October meeting with the understanding that if the board can schedule a special meeting, if, they would tell you and you would re-notice?
Yes, and we'll take it both, because we want to try to have this on 2021.
All right, so what is the definite date, October, October 28th? So, let's just say, we're going to adjourn this application to October 28, 2021, without the need for any further public notice, subject to a caveat in a minute. And, Mr. Lonsky, do you, on behalf of your client, consent to extend the timeframe within the Boardhead Act? Okay, thank you for that. And then, I guess, did the chairman that April will do her magic, or attempt to do her magic after this meeting, and see if a special meeting can be accommodated? If it can, I don't know that it can, but if it can, and there's going to be alternate arrangements, the applicant will provide a new notice for that?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's exactly right.
Mr. Kennedy, if I could, could you just include me in that?
Absolutely.
Because I've got a couple that...
No problem. Fair request, and we will do that.
And it'll be 6 p.m., Mr. Jackman?
So, what do you, motion to, would you... Motion to carry to October 28th.